Yes, Commissioner Kerlin had announced that she wasn't available for tonight's meeting. I'm not sure about --
Esther texted she was running at this point four minutes late.
She'll be here shortly. But I think we could start the meeting in any event.
All right, Linda, when you're ready.
Rodriguez. Swift.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Fragoso. Kirline absent. Gonzales Parver. Chair Newton.
Here.
Okay. Has everyone had a chance to look at the agenda? Are there any suggested changes? And if not, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, motion Green, second Swift. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Meeting protocol, I'll just read real quickly. The chair shall maintain order at the meetings in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, and the commission has the responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior in order to encourage community participation and citizen input at commission meetings. The commission and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motive of commission members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. And with that, we will open up the floor for public comments on any non-agenda items. If someone would like to speak about something that is not on the agenda, you can go up to the podium and be heard. And not seeing anyone, we will close the public comment on non-agenda items. There's no consent calendar items, and we have a presentation on the dark sky with Joyce Gardella. Thank you, Joyce. Okay, can you hear me? All right, wonderful. I'm going to move this right here. And pardon my side. Pardon my side, folks. Maybe I am going to need to leave it there. There, okay. Hi, I'm Joyce Gardella. I'm from San Francisco. I am a part of Norma's Environmental Forum of Marin group, and I've had a lifelong interest in nature and the environment. But it wasn't until I was in the Environmental Forum group and we were beginning to research our class projects that I met my partner in this project, Margie Feliz, who can't be here tonight but is with us in spirit. Okay. It wasn't until I was in this class, we were looking at our projects, that I began to realize that just like wildlife corridors and waterways, that the night sky, there is something very valuable and needing protection there in the night sky, and it's important to us. So I learned a little bit about the major barrier to the night sky, which is light pollution. And as I'm understanding it, you folks, if you decided to adopt a lighting ordinance of some sort, would be the first in Marin to do so. So I'm here to tell you a little bit about dark sky and its barrier, outdoor lighting that isn't appropriate, and to also acquaint you with the International Dark Sky Association, whose materials you have there in that calendar. There are some brochures, and a lot of the information on here is from them. So to begin, the nighttime is proving to be much more important to us than we knew, and we're losing it. So between 1947 and the year 2000, the United States got 6% brighter every single year. And now, apparently, the globe itself, the Earth, is brightening at a rate of 2.2% per year. Some countries like ours are fully lit, but we're getting brighter also with new technology that's coming up. So the night sky is, shall we say, endangered, let's put it that way. The scope of this lesson is to talk a little bit about outdoor, the history of outdoor lighting, the purpose, the lamps that are used, design basics, why too much light is harmful, and a demonstration, some demonstrations of good lighting. So for centuries, we as humans experienced the night scape as if there's a full moon, it's bright out, and if there's a new moon, it's dark. And in the last 100 years, people who live in cities and suburbs experience a very different night scape, that lower photo, and it's full of lighted buildings, streets, and open spaces. The street lighting itself began in the colonial times, and it was basically candles on wooden poles, which didn't always work out. Yeah. But it's not going to stay, and I -- Yeah? Okay. All right. So that moved, candles and wooden poles evolved to the early 18th century oil lamps on cast iron poles and in cast iron fixtures. In the early 1800s, gas lamps came into use, they began to pipe gas in. And I just finished a book, The Last Days of Night, about the battle to electrify the United States that was waged between Thomas Edison and George Westinghouse. It's very, it's a very good, very good book. So by the 20th century, electric lamps were in wide use in this country, and beginning to be in many countries around the world. So outdoor lighting now, I'm sorry that this isn't exactly on, but can, you can see it okay? Is, as you can see, street lighting, roadway lighting, park stadiums, parking lots, landscaping, residential buildings, you know, pathways for pedestrians and bicycling, and more. We use it as a tourist attraction now. You know, we light our beautiful Bay Bridge in San Francisco, and it's beautiful, and it's good lighting, but we, you know, it's light. So, and I'm not here, and neither is the Dark Sky Association, to say that's bad, but to look at how we use our outdoor lighting, how we can use it better. Provide, the purpose of outdoor lighting, of course, is to make things safe, to extend the use of parks and walkways into the night, to enhance notable features, historic buildings, et cetera, and to enhance travel on roads and at intersections. So light pollution is basically wasted light. It is light that has no purpose, it's not performing a function, and yet we're using energy to provide it. Artificial light is light that trespasses into an area like your neighbor's window, where it shouldn't go. Wasted light includes sky glow, like you see here, and it includes glare, which is dangerous. Glare is when you look at a light and it blinds you. So outdoor lighting is where we find a solution. It's there to enhance, not impede visibility, produce, not produce glare, be part, not all of the landscape, not wander where it shouldn't go, and it needs a master plan. Here you see a ball field, and it's very well lit, and I'll tell you some of the aspects that they cite on how well this is lit. So the light itself is angled down and lighting exactly the area that it should be, and no more. And if you see at about 10 o'clock there, a window of a house that's a neighbor, and you can see the window lit up, there's no light going in there. So those neighbors are well taken care of from that standpoint. Oops. So shielded luminaries are the great asset to have on good lighting. And you can see the angle on the right-hand side is a 90-degree angle, and the object to be lit is in the middle, and the 90-degree angle is split so that the object is right in the center. You see on the left, a, what is that, 200 and something degree angle, with light going beyond the horizon and wandering, so that it's lighting where it's doing, not only doing no good, but doing some harm. Below is an Escondido building that had lighting on the roof, and, I'm sorry, on poles that were not shielded, and then you see it with the shields, and you see how bright the light still is where it's needed. Here is Los Angeles in 1988 from the Griffith Observatory. Above it, above Los Angeles, you see the sky glow, and that is exacerbated by pollution and cloud cover, so it makes it even brighter. And LA, remember, we got 6% brighter every year, LA, you know, is responsible for a lot of that. They got brighter too, in other words. So you can see no stars. It's impossible. And on the right is a light that is meant to provide safety, but it is not shielded, and you can't see, that's a van on the right-hand side, and to the right of the van is a man. You can't see him. And that's what unshielded light that glares produces dark shadow, and dark shadow is not good. So the issues, oh, there's the Escondido building, okay. Here, unshielded luminaries that waste energy and money, and that responsible lighting conserves energy and money. The Escondido Education Center before and after, so you see the lights on their roof that are going into the air, and then you see the after on the right of it lighting where it should be. And again, here's a campus shot, non-shielded lights, and there's a student, the lights are there to protect the students, but the glare that it's producing, there's a student in this picture, but you can't see him. And that's a great example of what the glare from these lights, these unshielded lights does. Negative impact extends to health of animals and humans, and they're finding out more and more about that now, it's very interesting. With the animal world, we and all animals, our life revolves around this 24-hour cycle, the circadian rhythm. And even the nocturnal animals, their life revolves around it too, they just use it differently. So when they're under this constant light or creeping light, wildlife and fish become disoriented, and then the most important functions in their life, migration, mating, foraging, and sleep, get interfered with, and you get then all kinds of ecological disaster. Negative impact on human health, obviously, light disrupts sleep, and it's in the dark that one of our most important hormones, or a very important hormone, melatonin, is produced. When that's interrupted, it's been shown to, because melatonin is an antioxidant, a very powerful one, it's been shown when that's interrupted to increase your risk of cancer. And they're doing studies on that, but they've already done several, and they can see the correlation. Of course, glare is not good, and so basically, it's a profound impact on human life that we're just learning about now. Impact on astronomy, here is a gateway science that, when I was looking at all of the things in today's world that we rely on, besides the cell phone technology and the x-rays, MRIs, medical imaging, satellite communications, there's major impetus behind the supercomputer construction for the last 50 years, and all kinds of information on climate change, weather patterns, and solar observations that this science has led to. And also bandwidth for television satellite and radio communication. So it's an underappreciated and not at all understood science. But the best lab that we have for this is outside. It's the sky. So that's in the fact that night sky is getting harder and harder to find, and if you have any, it's a rarity now, it's a precious commodity now. So solutions for this are, again, with the outdoor lights, what they call full cutoff is no light above that 90-degree angle. And these lights, these better outdoor lights, are fairly easy to buy and retrofit. They often say that they pay for themselves because of the less cost of, less energy used. And some of the timers, dimmers, and motion sensors that can be employed now are better than others like the dust-to-dawn sensor that can't detect what some of these new ones can. Here are lamps, on the left poor, on the right good, and you can see that the poor light just fans out from whatever fixture is there, it just spreads. So given that you can see light for 200 miles, so Los Angeles lit is seen from 200 miles above it and 200 miles all around it. And here's light that's going out for no reason at all, and can easily be contained by a better lighting fixture. The types of lamps, I've always loved the incandescent, but when I started looking into this, talk about inefficient. So of the four basic types, it's incandescent, fluorescent, high-intensity discharge, which you'll see on here as HID, and there's a range of kinds of that. And then the light-emitting diode, LED, which is emerging technology, it's out there, and it's being, it's very much being improved on, and is the way a lot of cities, large cities, are going now. So when I was looking at the incandescent as compared to the other light bulbs, this is the most commonly used, but it's very inefficient. So the energy that goes into it, the electric current, 90% of it goes into heating a filament that then produces light, and 10% of all of that energy goes to light. So when you're looking at an incandescent bulb, it produces 16 lumens per watt, as opposed to, I'm going to skip ahead, where is it? No, it's not there, okay. As opposed to a CFL, which is those corkscrew bulbs, they produce 50 lumens per watt. Then you go up to a fluorescent, which is used a lot in commercial settings, is much more long-lasting, three to four times more efficient, and you see 100 lumens. When you get to the high-intensity discharge, the various ones of those, those are very powerful, they're used for large areas, to light large areas, parking, huge parking lots, areas in an airport, et cetera. And they can go from 100 lumens per watt to 150 lumens per watt. The metal halide that, the low pressure sodium that can be used is now being phased out. It produces 200 lumens per watt, but it's an older technology, and I just read that Philips is phasing it out as of July of 2019. And that's because so much progress is being made with the LED. So types of luminaries, you see the column-mounted and the wall-mounted, all of them direct the light down and to the ground, so it's contained, it's not wandering out there, and that's what's good about those. Other luminaries, the bollards and the recessed fittings that are used to, both of them for pathways, and the recessed fittings for uplighting on some structures and trees. Here are two ball fields. I didn't even know that the one on the right was a, I didn't even know there was a ball field there when I looked at, there's so much glare from the one, and I'd much prefer being a neighbor of the one on the right. Here's recessed lighting at a gas station, done poorly at the top and well at the bottom. And fully shielded lighting, you can see where the rays of light are going there at an airport. Unshielded lighting at an ATM, so that's a blast of light that is creating dark shadow, and it's not effective, it produces glare. It can be much more effective if it were directed. Here's an unshielded mercury vapor light. The mercury vapor is also being phased out. It turns out that the older the mercury vapor is, it stays on, but it just keeps getting dimmer, and you're still paying the electric bill on it. So that's going the way of some of the other old ones. And then shielded lighting, this is a suburb of Quebec, that's a test site, and on the right is an area of unshielded lamps, and on the left you see the very different atmosphere of that, and yet still good lighting. So I wanted to introduce you to the International Dark Sky Association, because if you look forward, if you're looking at doing a lighting ordinance, these guys can help a lot. They have a step-by-step plan that they can help you design a lighting audit, you know, educate you on the relevant terms and measurements. There are exercises you can do to test approaches, and they can help you design a master plan. So I started this by telling you that my partner in this, Margie Feliz, can't be here tonight, but she's the one who got me hooked on this. When she was talking about, she was describing this project to our class, and she went like this. And she triggered one of the best memories I've ever had in my life. I was eight years old, it was the dead of night on our Michigan farm, we had just moved out there from the city, and my dad comes in with a slight smile on his face, and he gets my brother and I out of bed, you know, bundle up. So we're wondering where we're going, I'm wondering why I have this strange kind of dad that gets me out of bed. And we, out we go with our flashlights into the cold, and we, you know, you can, I can hear the boots scrunching on the snow. And we get, we get outside and we stop, turn our flashlights out, and we look up, and that's something like what we saw. That's a gift that you can give your residents, at least you can give more of it to them. So I hope you consider it. Thank you very much. Thank you. And we may come back to this subject later on tonight. So moving on to our public hearing items, and first up is 12 Acacia Road, application number 1803, and I'll turn it over to Michelle.
Thank you. The project site is 8,500 square feet in area and is flat with a 3% slope. It's located in the RS6 zone and developed with a 1,546-square-foot two-story residence that contains two bedrooms and two bathrooms, as well as a garage and decks. As part of a resident As part of a residential resale inspection request in 2017, the building inspector documented that there appeared to be an addition to one of the bedrooms and that a workroom or a workshop above the garage had been converted to a bedroom without the required approvals. After receiving notification of these alleged violations, the owners have been diligently working with staff to bring the property into compliance with the town's regulations. So, the applicants are proposing after-the-fact approval of an addition of 29.5 square feet to the northern bedroom, conversion of the 495 square foot workroom above the garage to a bedroom, and with legalization of those improvements, the residence would total 2,070 square feet and increase to a three-bedroom home. The staff report contains a table breaking down the setbacks and how the property and residence complies with those. Because the site does not meet the minimum width requirements, a conditional use permit is required for any new construction, and because the bedroom, or rather, the workroom above the garage would be converted to a bedroom, the parking needs to be brought up into conformance with the town code. So, a total of three onsite spaces are required, one of which must be covered. The applicants propose to comply with the town code requirements for parking by locating two spaces in their garage. One of those spaces does not meet the standard width requirement for parking, so that, there's a request for a variance for a compact space in the garage, and then the third spot is proposed in the driveway. After doing an analysis of other properties and homes in the general neighborhood with the improvements, the residence is in keeping with other homes in the neighborhood. And with that, staff recommends that you open the public hearing and take testimony, and then move to approve application 18-03 by adopting resolution 2018-01.
Thank you, Michelle. Are there any questions from the commission?
I do have a question for staff. With the new ADU law, if the property owner had said that this was a second dwelling unit instead of an added bedroom, would they still have to comply with the parking requirement?
Right. So, what the, what the requirements state that if you're within a half of a mile of a transit stopper station, you do not need to provide that fourth space. So, I, you know, we had, I had talked with the applicants about whether they wanted to pursue an ADU permit at this point, and they decided not to do that at this time, so I didn't go through that analysis.
Michelle, I had a similar question. So, when you spoke with the applicant, did you also talk about a junior second unit?
Yes. They did not want to pursue an ADU, an ADU at this time.
With, with this being an after-the-fact permit, this is kind of a procedure question, I guess. Are we, are, are we going to be sending a building official through the house to make sure it was built right because there wasn't any permit process for the building?
Yes, they, they go through an after-the-fact building permit process.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you.
So, if you're looking at the plans, there was a 20, the 29 square foot addition to the bedroom, that's part of kind of the main part of the residence.
The one that said a few beds on the left, the little bed off of...
Yes, the living area.
The living area?
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, I can hear how that's different. The original kitchen, living room, and bedroom were there, as was the small adjacent space. The new, the, what is now called the new bedroom, that was there originally constructed but just expanded? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. And just out of curiosity, have the, have the interior of the garage space has been measured?
A staff member did not go out and measure those spaces. We used the plans. I know the applicant went and measured and confirmed that the measurements on the plans were correct. It's just one foot shy of that 18-foot width that's needed for the two standard spaces.
Any other questions from the commission for staff? Okay, then we'll open the public hearing. Is the applicant here tonight? Hi.
Hello.
If you push the button.
My name's Glenn Janssen. My wife, Michelle, is here. We've been residents of Fairfax now for 21 years. I know that number very well because our daughter was born two months after we moved in. And we, when we originally bought the house in 1996, we bought it as a three-bedroom, two-bath house. It has always been that way in our minds. It's been that way registered with the county. I know that the town and the county don't always agree. I've learned this over the course of time. In, as, as we, we have never made a change at all to the room that's above the garage. It's always been to us a bedroom. That's the way we bought it, and we were of the impression that it was always a bedroom in the eyes of Fairfax. So, this was a big surprise to us when we came in to clean up. We knew we were gonna put the, the house on the market this year, and when we needed to clean up the expansion of the, I think it's bedroom number two on your plan, which wasn't done properly, and after the fact, we're, we're coming in to try to clean that up in the eyes of the town, and everything was done, that was done to it was done to code. It became a real surprise to us that the bedroom above the garage was being called a workshop, and there was question about it as an additional dwelling unit. So, that's, we, we've, we've always maintained it as a single-family home. There's no desire to make it a dual, you know, dual residence like that. So, I, I don't know if this is helpful, but our neighbor, Charlene, is also here. She's also our real estate agent for, just to be completely upfront with everybody. But she has been here longer than us, and she was around when Mark and Beth Farrar owned the house before us, and was maybe much more aware of the, the process when the Farrars did the construction in 1984. Any questions that you have?
Yeah, I'll ask the commissioners if anyone has a question for the applicant. Okay, have a seat.
Just one question, sir. When was the bridge constructed?
That was, well, before we were there. I believe it may have been reconstructed when, when the Farrars did all the construction in 1984.
Okay, thank you very much. Have a seat, and we'll open this up for anybody else from the public who'd like to comment on this project.
Hi, my name's Charlene Baumsteger. I live at 10 Acacia Road. I'm the nearest neighbor, and I have lived there since 1987, and I did know Mark and Beth Farrar, who owned the house and who did the construction of the garage and the room above it. And from 1987 on, it has been a bedroom as far as any of us were concerned. I can attest that Glenn and Michelle have done no remodeling to that portion of the house. They changed a ceiling fan in there, that's all, with a permit or with, it was done right. You know, they, I'm just here in support of it. That's all I want to say. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else from the public like to speak on this matter? And seeing none, could I just ask you to turn the mic off there at the podium? And we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Any thoughts, guys?
I had a very simple question. I actually was wondering who slept there.
It's the master.
Oh, it is the master. So, the, the room downstairs is not the master.
It's the one above the garage?
Yeah.
Or the one on the other side?
Right, so that's the master. Okay. Thanks.
I just, I have a minor change to resolution 2018-01. I mean, the project I have no issues about. I think it's, it's a good project. Always glad to see when, well, no, but I, I don't like when someone, you know, builds something without a permit or inspections or anything like that. But I'm glad to see when you come forward and, and get that all fixed and corrected, and that's, that's the essence of this. So, in variance findings on page one of the resolution, variance finding number two, I think there's a finding that's a little bit missing in that discussion. So, where it says the project complies with the provisions of variance, et cetera, complies with the provisions, it, it kind of goes into, because the project will provide the required three onsite spaces and it's, you know, the safety and hazards will not result from the granting of the variance. So, we don't really talk about number one, which is traffic is not expected in the volumes that we, so that's contained in 17028070B, and I think we just need to say that. You know, that, that one, neither present or anticipated future traffic volumes or wording to that effect, and then just include that one in there. Otherwise, you know, I think the reso is okay, and the project also.
Go ahead.
I had a comment. The staff report talks about the area of the bedroom expansion is over 17 feet from the side property line, and a tall bamboo hedge exists along the property line screening the additions from the neighboring property. When you look at the resolution, under Ross Valley Fire Department, it talks about maintaining an effective fire break around the structure in accord with the Ross Valley Fire Department Standard 220 for Vegetation and Fuels Management Plan. So, if you were to look at that, this is just a comment to you, bamboo is a fire-prone plant and prohibited on that, so you might want to look at, at the bamboo that you have there and, and doing something different with that.
Anyone else want to share their thoughts on this one? Okay, do we have a motion?
I'd like to recommend approval of resolution 2018-01 with the amendments to the findings for variance number two as stated. Into the record, let me know if you want me to repeat it.
And is there a second?
I second the motion.
Okay.
Was that, what resolution number was that?
I heard 201801.
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, your application has been granted. There is an appeal period that is some...
10 days.
10 days long, thank you very much. And if no one files an appeal, you can move forward. Have a, thank you.
Oh, you're giving me a mic?
It's on.
Oh, it's hot.
Okay, I'll just get close to it when I need to. Thank you, Linda.
Okay, thank you, everybody. And Michelle, you're up again. This is 20 Park Lane, application 1804.
The project site is 9,500 and square feet in area. It's located at the end of a cul-de-sac and has a slope of 28%. There is an existing 1,842 square foot, two-story residence onsite that contains four bedrooms and three bathrooms, as well as a detached garage. The project includes the addition of a total of 499 square feet to the east and west sides of the structure, increasing the size of the existing decks, increasing the height of the residence by eight foot six inches, but not, but not providing an additional story. It's just the height of the residence to provide higher ceilings in the main living areas of the, of the home. The entry deck would be increased to provide a front porch, and an onsite parking space is proposed adjacent to the garage. The staff report contains a table that breaks down all the setbacks and how the property and residence relate to those required setbacks. Because the improvements to the residence constituted a 50% remodel, and because the site is located in the landslide hazard zone overlay area, a hill area residential development permit is required for the project, and the staff engineer has reviewed the project actually several times and has determined that the project can be constructed in compliance with the code. Because the project constitutes a 50% remodel, three onsite parking spaces are required. The applicant... The applicant is proposing a variance to one of those parking spaces. So they're proposing two onsite spaces and one of those onsite spaces, they are requesting a compact variance for that space. In addition, the site is unique. It's very irregularly shaped, so the existing residence, as well as some of the improvements, are located in the combined front rear setback. So a variance is required to construct the project in the combined front rear setback. So since staff prepared the staff report for the project, it has come to the staff's attention that unfortunately the story polls for the project weren't put up in the required 10-day tying period. I know they're up now, but they went up very recently. And there's also not a recorded encroachment permit for some pre-existing structures that are located in one of the right-ofways, one of the paper street right-ofways. And also, the applicant is considering maybe some potential modifications to the project now that the story polls have gone up. So while staff is recommending approval of the project due to these new items that have come to light, the planning commission has the option to continue the item to the May planning commission meeting and use this opportunity to relay any concerns or direction regarding the project to the staff and the applicants.
Thank you, Michelle. Do any of the commissioners have questions for staff?
So on the town engineer's report, you touched upon that. On the north side of the property is, let me pull it out here. The town engineer's memo talks about stairs decking fences and retaining wall extending over into that 10-foot lane and talked about an encroachment permit. So it is encroaching. Is that the type of encroachment permit that would then need to come back to us and that wasn't a part of this?
That's correct.
Okay.
So when this project comes back, hopefully in May, that piece, there will be a request for an encroachment permit for those items, just to get everything on the property up to, up to code, up to snuff.
And then also, he talks about the drainage going down to scenic and he mentions in there as well, the need for an encroachment, possible need for encroachment permit that would include maintenance for that, down to that scenic road right of way. So would that be, is that definitive as to that needing an encroachment permit?
The town engineer used the term encroachment permit, but we refer to it as a street opening permit. So that would be something that comes into play and is requested during the building permit phase, so after the discretionary approvals are granted.
Okay, so, and, you know, if this comes back to us, then it's a substantial remodel from Ross Valley Fire's perspective, yet it doesn't address in here the veg management plan. So that would be a piece of that. Also, any parking pads would be permeable, correct?
I believe, we can ask the applicants, but I believe we had discussions and it's in the project application of the pad being permeable and you can require that in the resolution.
And then it also, in the package, talked about, in the draft resolution, the need for another arborist report to address the potential for that live oak to be, as far as what would need to be trimmed on that due to the, to the house. My question on that, and, you know, if the applicant is looking at making some changes, you know, it may be a moot point, but would not that be something that an arborist can look at with the plans and make a determination earlier than when it goes for building permit, that it may need to be something that may need to go to the, potentially to the tree committee?
Right. It's my understanding, actually, that the arborist was there today. And so the arborist was at the site today and had the benefit of the story polls being in place. So I'm hoping we'll get a revised report in time for the May meeting or when the project comes to you again.
And I probably have another kind of comment, but I'll wait on that one until we hear from the applicant.
Okay, yeah, I had a number, whenever you have a property at the crest of a hill and it's at the top and there's going to be a drainage issue, I'm concerned about the drainage issues. I'm not quite sure what the pop-up outlets do, but they seem to be helpful and I have a question of staff about what that means. But I want to also say thank you for the discussion under hill area residential development permit. I've always wondered why we have this situation and you have brought it to light, in my mind anyway, why, why we have the situation. So at least I understand it. Maybe we have to slightly ameliorate our work program on that issue somewhat, since there is a physical reason. But I have issues with that. I have issues with there being slide area involved. And I had a change to the reso that I won't mention now. So, but one of the questions I had was, they say, it says in here, "As described, the existing residence does not comply with the 12-foot rear setback nor the 35-foot combined front rear setback. While the proposed additions would comply with the required individual minimum yard setback elements," I'm just wondering what elements?
Sure. So if you refer back to the table, what that was trying to get at was that it meets the required six-foot front and 12, well, the existing house is within the rear. So those improvements in the front meet that six-foot minimum individual front setback. It's just they don't meet the combined front rear.
Okay, thank you.
So they don't, it doesn't meet the rear setback?
Right.
Anyone else with questions for staff? I have a question. The discussion above the box on the second page of the staff report refers to increasing the size of the entry deck to 489 square feet, but I didn't see what the original area was.
And it's a small landing. I can, I can do those calculations right here, but it's a very small kind of front landing and now it's a front porch that basically extends along the front facade.
Okay, and then the, there was a discrepancy between, oh gosh, where is this? In the resolution, I think there's a reference to 2,353 square feet as the improved square footage at the end of the report. Before the other agency conditions, it refers to 2341. And so when, if we do bring this back, maybe we can work through some of those discrepancies. And those were all my questions. So is the applicant here tonight? Hi, why don't you come on up and introduce, turn the mic on there?
Hi, I'm Ray Arada and that's my wife, Anna, and MJ are architects. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm going to ask my commissioners if any of them have questions for you.
I had a question on the parking. So we're asking for a variance for one space and a variance for the other one to be the compact space. So looking at the property, it's down a non-town maintained street. It's very small. My concerns with that is public safety, fire department getting down there. Has there been any look at, and I know it sounds like you're looking at, at some changes potentially with this, to trying to fit in another space so that you don't need the variance for that third space, for the parking space there and potentially two compact spaces on there?
So what's your question? And I might need my friend Art and MJ. I can address what you spoke to, if that will help. So it's my understanding that based on the contour of the lot and that gravel road that you spoke to is how Wendy Cragg, our neighbor, drives and backs their car in, it goes in and out. So the way our property comes, our garage is right here and the proposed parking was going to be right next to it with an entrance to come right in there. So as MJ, can you come on up here, you can explain that contour in terms of, because we, we thought, we anticipated this question, so like, could we? And you determined when you looked at that other, the area, could we do another space? Could you explain that to them?
Correct. There's a, there is an angle that is created by the, what is defined as the front property line, which cuts in as you go out that ridge line. So the further we would extend more parking, the more shallow it would have to be, to the point where unless it's maybe motorcycle-only parking and you don't have any motorcycles, it would not function. As it is, the only one that, the one that we can propose needs to be a couple of feet shy of its required depth because of this property line angling in towards the house. So a third space really just doesn't, it can't fit. There's no more room.
The other, the other piece about this, the garden is near and dear to my wife, so we put a lot of intention around how do we minimize the impact to the garden? And so that's the other piece. And for what it's worth, you cannot tell, but I'm 6'4", we're small car people. I was driving around in a Fiat electric car for a long time. So the proposed smaller space actually suits our needs and right now, due to how we inherited the house, we bought it, we were parking in this, in the area. So this is actually going to be an improvement for us to be off of the area so that the parking shenanigans we do with our neighbors that we're all friendly with kind of goes away, so.
Other questions for the applicant?
This is, that's fine. This is a very bold project. It's beautiful if it comes to fruition. I love the porch and what you've done to open it up to the neighborhood. And I think I understand the site constraints with the parking. It looks like you are improving, but you have site constraints. One question I have is about the height of the vault. It looks like you've got a vaulted ceiling with a exposed truss, or is, are you going to have like a...
There are actually parallel cord trusses, so the roof thickness is about like this and then there will be beam work below that. But yes, a vaulted ceiling.
Okay. So may I ask, is one of the changes that you're making related to the height of the new roof over the living, you know, the common spaces? Is, or are you guys working on it? Just because I was looking at the interior height.
Yeah.
It's really tall. I mean, and it's great in the right context. I'm just curious, because when I looked at it, that was like the first thing that I thought, it's like, wow, this is, you know, it's going to be, it's going to be an incredible change. It could be, you know, it's going to be beautiful, but is it too tall?
So let the tall guy talk first. Our house right now was beautifully reconstructed by the same builder who's going to build our house, where they dug deep, did all the poles, did a lot of work. And right now, the ceilings are, it's so, it's very claustrophobic.
Yeah.
And so that's the, that's the desire for us internally. Plus I have three grown kids and 6'3", 6'2", you get the picture when we're all at home. The other thing is, is when I look at impact, because I walked around, we have great neighbors. And so the way our plot of land is, it's like a finger and everyone's around us below us. So the only people above us are those that have passed. And our, the person, Patsy, our neighbor, who's working with us to create the kind of insides that we want. So we have very good neighbor relations. And in terms of the impact, because we've talked to all, to the neighbors where this counts, down on scenic, they are below our foundation and they can't even see our house except through some of the trees. So from a steepness or from a, you know, the height of the ceiling, we've even talked to Wendy, our neighbors at the end, and their only concern is, you know, are you going to have a window looking over at us? And the answer on that is no. A window to let some light in. So I don't know if that answers your question, but...
Yeah, I mean, it does. I was just concerned, I mean, from the outside, it looks like a two-story building, but it's vaulted inside. And so it, I think, I think it fits in fine with the surrounding neighborhood where you do have other two-story buildings. I was just looking, you know, usually, I always just kind of go by the plate height.
Yeah.
You know, nine, a nine-foot plate height will give you a really high space and I think I see 13. Is that correct?
Is that accurate?
I believe it is, yeah.
Okay, so that's really tall. So, and so when staff brought up the fact that you guys were looking at making some changes, I was curious if the story polls had anything to do with the height.
I can address the changes. This is my second time I've done this, this is my wife's first time. And so things became very real to her yesterday when the story polls went up. And we had our own concerns about how far we thought the porch was going out until today, when we realized, okay, it's not going to go out that far. And honest to her concerns, and so I want to stay happily married, so we listened and we determined that we want to kind of, I think what we decided we're going to do is bring the roof line and have just a walkthrough. So we are going to make a suggested change so that we stay happy and it stays. One of the things that's really important to Anna is the integrity of the 1925 cottage. So we didn't want to come in and be the people that came in and blew up the house. So the footprint is 450 some odd square feet, but the airspace of what happened as a result of the ceilings is what kicked us into a 50% remodel, remodel. So that's what we're having to contend with and comply with, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have a question for the applicant?
I would like to say one thing. So this has been a, I've told people, this has been a Buddha teaching experience for me and my wife. And so we came here tonight to ask for your approval, if there's any concerns we could establish, knowing that we very likely get the continuance. So I just ask if there's any way that we can work with some of these other nuances that came up, like that gate on the left side that was a pre-existing condition. We're happy to make things right because our plan is and was to live in the house and then kind of go up to other places. So we're swimming and all that, so a little mercy, but I understand if you guys got to do what you got to do and I appreciate your guidance. We appreciate your guidance.
Okay, thanks very much. Anyone else like to speak during the public hearing on this application? All right, hearing none. I will... I will close the public hearing. Would you do me a favor and turn the mic off for me? Thank you. And bring it back to the commission. Go ahead.
Let me say that a continuance is better than a rejection. So, you know, all we wanna do is get it right. And I think staff has indicated they need time to digest. And, you know, 11th hour story polls do this kinda thing also, you know, so.
Michelle?
So you were gonna ask for feedback, so I think I'd like to give it to staff as well. My recommendation this evening was gonna be to deny the application, and it was because I didn't feel like the design met the findings necessary, particularly regarding the design meeting the maximum retention of natural topographic features. Particularly, just from a design standpoint, and that the infill development is a size and scale appropriate to the property. And what I'm talking about is two specific things. One is on page six of the staff report, and thank you, Michelle, for doing comparison of the square footages to those on the surrounding. And when you do a comparison of the net lot area of the adjoining properties and the square footage of those, the properties that are surrounding are all at 19%, but the proposal's gonna be at 25%. So it is significantly higher. Also, just the page, Plan Page A-3.2, the north elevation, which is the downhill facing elevation, seems very significant, and I think the other commissioner was addressing exactly what my concern is, is that the top of roof line is significantly higher than existing conditions, and I think will be visible from a downhill perspective. And I think, you know, the color even adds to that, but, you know, they're matching existing conditions, so I didn't wanna address that. Thank you.
Go ahead, Cindy.
I couldn't give, you know, I would rather hold approval, disapproval until you all come back, since we're looking at a continuance now. But what I would really like to see is have you work with, and go with staff, and look at if there is the capability to put in that third compact parking space there. And possibly with the one you have now is, I think, is nine by 16. So a compact is eight, eight by 16. So I would really like you to look and see if you could have two compact spaces there. I think that's very important, understanding that, you know, that goes with the property. So, I think it's important to have that parking onsite versus in that area for public safety and other parking needs there. So since you are looking at this and we are doing a continuance, I would like to see you review that with town for, to see if that could be fit in.
Commissioner Swift, would you clarify for me?
Can you begin?
I can't. I mean, it doesn't work, I'm using this.
Okay.
Could you clarify for me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Where you are proposing the two compact spaces be? I'm looking at A11?
Next to the, next to the, there's a garage there. And then I believe the first compact space is to the right of the garage.
Yes.
So I would be having them explore to the right of the first compact space.
Oh, okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Other thoughts?
I don't think so. Well, I just wanted to say, I think it's, I'm glad it's gonna be continued so that you can resolve and reconcile the outstanding issues. I would consider, I would ask you to consider bringing down the plate height a little bit. Maybe at some point, try to measure the height of this room, just to get a sense. I mean, I've been in spaces that, you know, are just as beautiful when they're a little bit lower, because the massiveness, excuse me, of the building, you know, I think from the outside, it reads like a two-story building, so I think it's okay. Just one thing to consider, too, if this is for stair heating, that's a big, tall space to heat. So, I don't know how you plan to address heating, but that's like one of the things that, you know, I run into all the time is, yeah, it's big and tall, but it's really hard to heat or to maintain heated. So that's, you know.
Cindy, when you said to the right, do you mean when, when we're facing east to the garage? Because to the left is, is it, he's been owned by PG&E. So that's not my property. Our property. Facing east.
So facing the garage, the first compact space is to the right, correct?
Yeah.
So then looking to the right of where that compact space was, if it was potentially the eight-foot width, if another eight-foot compact space could be fit next to it on that lot.
Which is what our architect spoke, that it wouldn't work. So, and when we come back, do we have to, do we have to, is this something we can talk, we have to prove this? Well, we wanna, we wanna get approval, so, you know, we already stood out there and I just don't understand what we need to do.
Well, staff can come out and meet at the site with you to see if it's possible.
Okay. And then on the, on the ceiling piece, you're recommending that we look at if we can, if we can lower it?
Lower it a little bit, yeah, I would recommend that.
Would make it a little bit easier.
Okay, all right. That's helpful.
Okay. Anybody else have some thoughts, Phil?
Well, I mean, another solution to a high ceiling heating issue is a fan, so like we have here.
Okay. And I guess.
One more point, speaking to the ridge height. I think it's important to note, there is a line of windows designed into the project, the idea being that the porch roof designates that first floor height, and then those upper windows create, you know, natural light that will flood that entire space. If we bring that down too much at a point, that element won't work for us. And that's, so that's my, without going back to the drawing board, my immediate concern that the interior environment will suffer because of the loss of that natural light if those windows don't work.
Okay, thank you. Can you turn that mic off for me? And I think you're gonna have your hands full in terms of addressing the issue of maximum retention of natural topographic features, minimizing grading of hillside areas with the idea of fitting that other parking space in there. I think those may be competing, and so I just encourage us to keep that in mind. So with that, I, I'm gonna ask the applicant if they're willing to, to put this off until our next meeting in terms of revising your application?
Yes. What I would recommend is that we do it to a date certain so we can avoid the need to renotice it, and I believe that's May 20, she's finding it?
Seventeenth.
May 17th. If the applicant cannot provide revised plans, what we would do is simply note on the notice that it had been continued to the following planning commission meeting. So, let's, let's continue it to that date certain. They're gonna work hard to make that date.
Great. So, do I hear a motion? Do I need a motion to continue this?
I saw most.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, ayes have it. Thank you very much. So, now we are moving on to Ten Court Lane, and Principal Planner Neil has the floor.
All right. The applicant is applying to stabilize the shed structure located at the eastern corner of the property adjacent to the San Anselmo Creek. They're proposing to do it with a grade beam and a grade beam at the perimeter of the storage barn and cast in place piers. The pier caps and the piers will project out 18 inches from the walls of the storage barn, 18 inches further into the required creek setback than the walls and foundation of the existing structure. Therefore, the project requires the approval of the following discretionary permits. It requires a use permit because the parcel doesn't meet the minimum 60-foot width requirement, and it requires a creek setback variance because the piers will project further into the creek setback. So the project is not gonna result in the barn structure itself being increased in height or being moved further into any of the required setbacks. The new foundation will be slightly above and below grade. Therefore, the proposed stabilization work beneath the existing barn will not have any significant impact on the site or the neighboring properties. The town code requires that no building, accessory building, structure, or swimming pool be constructed closer to the top of the San Anselmo Creek bank than 20 feet or two times the average depth of the bank, whichever is greater. But the code does allow non-conforming structures to be maintained. So, while there are other locations that the barn could be relocated, they're all in the creek setback and would just result in more disturbance to the site. We also, due to, do the proximity of the property to the creek, we required that they obtain an archaeological survey, which they did obtain, and the investigation revealed no evidence that the project site was ever used as a settlement by prehistoric populations. They also are, they obtained approval, I think today, of a JARPA permit to stabilize the other failing portions of the creek bank which are threatening their house. And so I have the approvals from the United States Department of Commerce, National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, the San Francisco Bay Regional Water Quality Control Board, Department of Fish and Wildlife, and the Department of the Army. So that's a big step.
I'll say.
So, we're recommending that you approve application 1802 by adopting Resolution Number 2018-03, which sets forth the findings and conditions of project approval. But we wanted to make a couple of modifications to that resolution.
Oh, I'm not sure.
Not to.
It's not part of this project, but you wanna just tell.
Correct. But I think because it relates to the conditions of approval, this is a challenging project because what's necessitating this work is the, the creek bank is not stable and is actively eroding. I'm sure the commissioners were able to see that from the pedestrian bridge crossing the creek. And so what they obtained their JARPA approvals for and the subsequent individual agencies involved in that joint agency review process was for a creek stabilization process. And we included in the plans, they show that creek stabilization, as noted in the staff report, that's not part of this project, but the two are linked, because obviously, if there was no ability to stabilize the creek, the bank would continue to erode and you would have basically exposed foundations in a very short period of time. So, this is why it's so helpful for them to have gone through that JARPA project to show that we don't have a chicken and egg problem in terms of the agencies that look at the creek stabilization have given their blessing, subject to the typical conditions, which are quite extensive. And so that's why when we're looking at the chicken and egg question about what, when the sequencing of these various improvements takes place, there's one additional condition.
We eliminated two conditions that I eliminated from the staff report and forgot to take out of the resolution, where the fire department was requiring sprinklering and compliance with exterior materials. I checked with the fire department, and they said that's not the case for this, as long as it's not gonna be used as living space. They don't have that need for that requirement. So, we eliminated conditions 16 and 17, and I put the revised reso in front of you. But we also wanted to add, so we removed 16 and 17, but we would like you to add the following new condition 16, which states, "Prior to the final inspection and approval of the work, the applicant shall finalize the stream bed stabilization project." Prior to the final inspection and approval of the work, on the shed, "The applicant shall finalize the stream, stream bed stabilization project." We don't want one project to get done and then the other one not to be completed, so.
Furthermore, this acknowledges that the stream bed stabilization project is under a really constrained timeframe with, in which the work has to take place. I believe it's June 1st, September, mid-September.
Could I just ask you, because the building official asked me.
Can you go on the, on the mic?
The building official wanted me to require them. That would conclude our report.
Thank you. Does anybody have questions for staff? Cindy?
Just a quick one on the staff report under the Ross Valley Fire Department. It talks about having to meet the Chapter 7A, but that's not a requirement as well, right?
Right.
Pulled out, so.
Right, we eliminated that.
Okay. You know, some people just like to push the envelope. This is one of those things, I think. This is, I read the Ross Lamont Report, and I took a look at the laboratory testing report, and the Miller Pacific was really enlightening. You know, if, if all these agencies approve this project, I personally don't like it because of the, the issue in the general plan that's mentioned. On page four, you know, we're talking about that we shall protect and restore the riparian habitat and ensure natural channel processes. But in reading the engineering report, allowing natural channel processes could mean allowing the creek to meander wherever it needs to go. And then other properties could be undermined if we do that. So there seems to be a conflict in that general plan policy and sort of reality, you know? So that's just a thought. But overall, I have, there's hundreds of issues here and a lot of, let's just not let this become another millennium tower. Let's get it, you know, I think there's a couple of choices in here. I believe they had to do it, you know, one way or another. And I would think that the applicant, for longevity purposes, would be better off doing the more expensive, the pier, the pier process instead of the, whatever, the other one, the angular process. So I would, I would ask you whether you've, you know, got a feel for that, or what's a better, more solid way of doing this? Because if this house is gonna stand for.
Well, are you talking, are we talking about the barn project, or are we talking about the creek stabilization project that's not before?
I'm talking about the barn.
Yeah, the barn.
I'm a little confused by that, because there's two ways of.
They're both very similar, but it's just whether they're gonna put a beam across the middle. And the town engineer will look at that, and he's gonna, he's gonna recommend the one that's gonna give them the best. And the town engineer will look at that, and he's going to, he's going to recommend the one that's going to give them the best stabilization of the structure. So...
Okay, I just, I just kind of asking like, what is the difference? How, how does it work? But maybe...
I think it, I think it stabilizes it, you know, more from how it, how it might shake in an earthquake if you have one, if you have a beam across the middle instead of just around the outside.
Right, right.
Yeah, it just increases the stability of the structure.
Right, and then I don't know if you know, but from the Miller Pacific report, there's a chart of a maximum height of the creek. And the question really is, you know, is that subject to natural change? Is, is that maximum height a fixed thing or can it, can it change?
Well, I mean, if you have a big washout or something, then the creek widens, yes, that, that height can change. It's a natural, it's a living thing, the creek. It doesn't stay.
So, so as far as you're concerned, the applicant is fully aware of that aspect?
I believe they've lived by it for a while, and they're fully aware of it now, much to their chagrin. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You know, in the olden days, we used to let people just build these concrete retaining walls, but none of the agencies will support that anymore. And so, they're really doing all they can do to try to stop too much scouring on their side without impacting other people. Right, yeah.
Right, and the creek, the creek retention part of the project, I think that that nails in dirt idea is probably the way to go to. I don't know if that's, if there's a choice there, but...
They're going whichever way all those agencies approved. I mean, they have approval of a set of plans, so at this point, we're bowing to them.
Okay, thanks.
Their requirements are super strict, and they, they call the shots down to the, to the letter.
Any other questions for staff from the commission? Okay, I, I do have a couple of questions. If the Fish and Wildlife Service's approval is for the restoration work along the creek bed, have we looked at what disturbance in the creek might cause when you're rebuilding a foundation? Do we know if there's Coho or anything in that part?
One of their conditions is that they have to obtain a stream bed alteration permit. So, they, they require the studies to find out what's there, and then they have to, they have to actually relocate the, reorient the creek and make sure all the organisms are placed into ponds before they start working. So, that's a, that's one of their conditions.
But is that for the reparation of the stream bed or is that for the work on the foundation?
Oh, that's, so this is, the, the foundation work is up above. So, I think they're going to have to happen concurrently, but I don't believe the drilling is going to enter the creek, the water channel. But you can double-check that with the architect. It's all the placement of the rock and digging of the footing of the new stabilization of the creek bank that's going to be threatening the, potentially threatening the organisms.
Yeah, and I was less concerned about that with all the federal and state entities that had to approve that work than I was about the physical impacts of construction in the creek when you've got workers working on the foundation and debris and all that kind of stuff.
Yes, through the chair. That was also something that staff had noted, that was that, that those outside agencies were focusing in on the creek work, and yet you had this fairly extensive foundation project, which was occurring a matter of a few feet away. And that's why I think there's a specific condition that addresses not, not locating any spoils or other construction materials, for example, slurry from the concrete, which is also really adverse. I'd have to look at us looking around for the step, the conditions in the reso. But there is one that specifically addresses that, and staff walks that bridge across the creek. The one thing I will say is that between the combined agency reviews, number six reads, yeah, on page five nine. It says, "No construction materials or spoils of any kind shall be deposited within the banks of San Anselmo Creek." So, that's one of those things where if it's observed, the project will get shut down, and we'll have a little come-to-Jesus moment about proper construction techniques in a riparian zone. But I would say that the brunt, the likely brunt of any impacts will be the stream bank restoration. As a practical matter, they will probably be very closely linked because they require protection of the stream bed. When I was talking with the building official today, he was aware where they were, they would use like sheets of plywood. And basically, any equipment that was involved would be traversing on top of the plywood and things like that. So, it's quite an involved process, and we can appreciate that the applicants have quite a process to undergo with the various stream bed alteration agreements and the, you know, alphabet soup agencies and their specific things. There's something about a, something about nesting birds as well, which I, I thought was kind of interesting. So, you know, the timeframes within which the work has to take place, it's, it's very detailed.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here?
We are.
All right. If you would like to come up and say anything, any of the commissioners have questions for the applicant?
No, just, I just want to make a comment that you're kind of interesting people and very brave to live on a creek like that. I do want to say this is, the most interesting discussion was in the, the historical discussion with the Mewox.
I actually...
I have a question. So, have you taken into account precautions to, you know, keep workers from walking across the creek and evaluate whether there are small fry or anything in there?
In, in two senses, yes. First of all, we're only working with people who have experience doing this kind of work in the creek. So, the drillers have done drilling around Redwood Creek, I think, Gary, you just mentioned. Our project manager, Gary Roth, has done lots of projects of this sort around creeks. We're working very closely with a Fuviel geomorphologist who's, who's with us tonight as well. So, we, we don't know how to do this right. We've, we've worked with a lot of different professionals who do exactly this sort of thing to take care of that. In addition, there's all sorts of, you know, yes, we've gotten permission to do this work from the various permitting agencies, but all of those permissions come with pages and pages and pages of specific requirements about how long the creek can be bridged and, you know, with what sort of substance and, you know, what color the eggs can be in the nearest nest and, you know, on and on and on. So, our instructions are very clear. We have a project manager whose job it is to make sure everybody who comes and get involved with this is going to be able to follow those instructions and coordinate this whole process. So, we're confident we'll be able to stick within those guidelines.
Okay, thank you.
I'm happy if you're willing to turn, it's not too much trouble to turn this back on. There were some questions that came up that I think I can answer with some visuals that might be helpful.
Sure, we can take a few minutes.
Maybe we could take a break now.
Maybe we will take a little five-minute break while we get the AV situation addressed.
That's a good idea.
All right, so we are continuing our public hearing, and you have the floor.
Thank you. My name's Alex Shuldner. I'm one of the owners of the property. This is Talia Friedland. She is the other owner of the property. Eric and Gary here have been working, the two major consultants and coordinators for, for the work, both involved with the JARPA and the, and the barn work. So, I'll, I'll share with you things which is, which, some information that we brought to the MPC, the Marin Joint Permitting Committee that, that meets monthly. We've been to them twice in 2017 to talk about different options for the project, and they found these sorts of presentations very helpful to understand the context and what they were really looking at. They've also since been actually out to the property as well, so they were able to see it in person. So, the location, it's, it's quite near downtown. The Ten Court Lane is our property there in the circle, so you can see we're there just south of the, or downstream, rather, of the confluence of the Deer Park and San Anselmo Creeks. And this is downstream also from the Creek Street Bridge Project. So, there's, there's major work going on in the stream, upstream from us as well right now. The other thing, we've been here since about 2013 when we bought the house. We've been, we've been in Fairfax somewhat longer, but we bought the house in 2013. And it was lovely times there until we were aware that, you know, the creek needed some attention. But it wasn't until 2017 when those creek levels in the, the winter of 2017, those, those levels went off the chart, that we realized it wasn't a matter of eventually getting to do it. It was something we really need to get on right away. So, that was the, that was the trigger that got us started, and we've been, we've been working on this project in one way or another since, since those events. So, so we're more than a year into, into planning on this in one way or another. This is the heart of the problem, which is that in that event in 2017, a lot of dead, dead branchy material and ivy and such was stripped away from here, and it revealed to us just how serious the cliff, how steep the cliff was and how serious the erosion issues were around the cliff. And, and, and significant material was, was moved, tree, a tree in the creek was knocked over. You see it down there at the lower right. And, and additional woody material there was, was moved, which, which moved some of the earth out of the corner there, which has resulted in that corner slowly settling ever since. So, that was the issue. It was obvious, the fence there at the top, which was, which was straight up and down. When we bought the place, after this event, slowly started to cant out. And, and that's for us has been sort of the ticking clock on the, on the project. When that thing gets horizontal, we know we've waited too long. And of course, that's quite near the barn, which would be the next, the next thing to go. You can't quite see it, but there's sort of a dark shape behind a bay tree there in the upper left-hand corner. That is our house. And the other issue we face is that if this is not addressed, sooner or later, that structure will be threatened. So, that's, that's the, the picture of, of the matter. So, looking at it in, in more surveys terms, right? So, we've had a survey done, and you can see those structures there. The barn there is the threatened structure on, on the right. And then the house that I mentioned there, there's some, some garden space between them. But we have problems all over the place. There's that undercut cliff face that, that I just mentioned. Further upstream from that, there've actually, the cliff is not just very steep, but it's actually slumped. In that heavy, in those heavy rains, part of it has, has flowed down into the creek. We have an armored section, which actually is holding up pretty well. It's, I think, something like a century old. And that takes the brunt of the creek. When, when, when the downstream comes rushing at the house, it hits that and is diverted to the right. So, a good thing that that's holding up. We have a lot of, you can see these sort of blue dots, those, those blue circles there. Those are old concrete piers that were originally standing upright. Many of them are fallen. There's wood lagging between them, and a lot of that is rotting and going in that, that wall in general is in a state of extreme disrepair and is slowly going away. And then there's a, a large lower section of the property there where the contour line's spread out, and that floods pretty completely and certainly flooded in the 2017 event. So, we realized we had to get on it, and we, we had a few goals for the project. One of them was to just save this barn. We, it's a useful project, a useful thing. We have a lot of extra stuff that's in there, and we would hate to see it go. We think it's a fairly attractive structure. You can draw your own conclusions from visiting or maybe the picture that I showed a, a couple of slides ago. But, but we want to save the thing rather than letting it roll down the cliff into the creek or having to take it down and throw it away. So, that was one goal. The second goal was to stop the creek encroachment, but to do it in a way that didn't just send the creek's force further downstream, you know, channel. We didn't want to channel the creek and then have to cause issues for people downstream. And that's, that's been an important design thing that I think the JARPA process has reflected. We wanted to improve the creek ecology, and this is actually, this is, this has been really kind of a key thing for us because for no other reason does this make financial sense. The barn is not an expensive structure. If really what we need is storage, we could, we could go and do that someplace else. For what we've already spent on this, we could get decades' worth of free storage someplace or, or storage more cheaply. It's an opportunity. We, we give money every year to various green organizations, environmental organizations. But this was a chance to do something to actually improve a physical environment for which we are responsible. And that has gotten us through a lot of, you know, as you choke, as you write the check, that's gotten us through that, and hopefully will, that spirit will stick with us as we write the even larger checks that are to come. And then, we didn't want to inconvenience the neighbors unduly. And, and there were issues, even if we had been able to move the barn, there was no place on the property that wouldn't have been inconvenienced for somebody else or in a flood plain or some issue like that. So, these factors have, have been the things that we've had most in mind as we've worked on the project. We have had extensive professional consultation. You've, you've seen the stacks of paperwork in, in front of you, and I think the, what you don't see is the two, the two meetings that we had with the MPC, as I mentioned. Those were very, very helpful meetings. It's a great resource to be able to talk to them. They're, they're, they're not on record, so you can go and sort of show them anything and talk to them about anything. And, and the, the two processes, one led us focus on what was likely to be a permissible solution for the in-creek work and then to validate that approach with them on a second occasion when we had more complete design documents. So, that, that process worked very well for us. We are not the first people to try. There was major damage done to the creek back in nineteen eighty-two. And there's, you could, you can, you know, get your glasses out and read carefully in the paperwork that still exists in the residential appraisal continuation, continuation record. You can see, sort of year after year or a couple, every couple of years, a building inspector comes by to see if anything's been done about the, the damage that was done to the property there. And, you know, every year, the answer is no, until finally at one point, the owner says, "Look, I, I just can't afford this. It's not going to happen." And I, I like the $20,000 figure because I'm fairly sure we've spent about that much already without having moved any earth. So, I wish he had been able to do it then. I expect it would have been a cheaper process. So, the, the in-creek work, you really have all, I don't have, I don't have a lot more to tell you about the barn itself, but you had some questions about the in-creek work. This is one, sort of a top-down view of what, of what Eric's really, his design, his proposal for this. And what you're seeing there, those, those stumpy things coming out, out of that wall are tree root wads. Surprisingly, one of the very most difficult parts of, of the project is going to be finding those things. Actually sourcing and getting our hands on those that we can use is, is going to prove to be pretty tricky, I think. And then some rock to hold that all in place. So, so it's building this bioengineered wall down there along the bottom to freeze the toe of the cliff in place. It doesn't solve the erosion issues above it, but it does make sure that those erosion issues are not going to go on indefinitely further and further back into the property. So, we get to draw that line there. This is a sideways view of it, and the idea is that, that this bench gets, gets built in the creek and then at a level above the normal flood level of the creek, there's earth that's planted with native plantings and that those things can spread and stabilize that area and resist further, further encroachment and, and impact from the creek. This is a visualization of what that should look like when we're done. Certainly a better picture than what we have right now. And I added this in just to, to address the questions of sort of working in the water itself that you were, that you were mentioning just a little before. So, the, that, that sort of blue tongue here, right? So, this is the work here along the creek, this is where this will be placed. All of this is dry. There are, except when it's actively raining, even right now, I think we're almost, we're almost back to entirely dry. This is here under all circumstances. The blue is basically perennial flow. But this is almost always a rocky, dry table. This is the workspace, the image of all this work happening here. This pool is new. That pool was created in 2017. And what we've observed and what the, the permitting biologists, when they came to inspect, observed is that that pool, because there is no flow into it, it fills with algae. If there are fish in it, they get picked out by raccoons immediately. So, there are definitely issues with, concerns with steelhead in particular around. But this is the only pool that's likely to be impacted if it's even still there when we come to do the work. And so, there will be a biologist who inspects that and makes sure that there isn't. But, but nobody's actually very concerned that, that they don't anticipate that we're losing a fish, a fish habitat in the process. And then the barn itself, that is done, all that work is done directly under, or actually right next to the barn. So, none of that's coming into the creek, the creek water itself. It's, it's reaching down towards the water, the water level of the creek, but it is not actually in the creek itself. So, that by way of answering some of the, some of the questions that were raised. We have the JARPA agency approval, and that comes in in various language and with, with lots and lots of conditions. And then, what that leaves us with is the question that's in front of you tonight, which is whether or not you're willing to approve the, the barn plan. And the, the barn plan that's in front of you is really this question of, do we have four, four of these corners? Or do we also need two additional ones there in the middle with a... of these corners or do we also need two additional ones there in the middle with a cross beam as well to properly secure the barn? We are not inclined to, having come this far, to do a partial job of it, so we're not going to insist on the four pillar solution rather than the six pillar solution. We'll take the advice of the engineer. We would like to put as little concrete as possible into the ground for cost reasons, for ecological reasons, but the real decision has to be made, what is going to provide the necessary support for the barn. And that'll be made with Mark, you know, with his oversight and that's part of the permitting process, I understand. So that's the picture of things from our point of view.
I have a question about the existing slab in the barn. What kind of condition is it in right now?
It's not in good condition. The slumping of the earth is leading, it was cracked even once we, when we had already bought it, starting to start to crack into four, four large pieces and the slumping at that corner is undercutting that slab itself. So that's, I don't believe we expect to be able to save the flat slab, although I don't know that we've made final decisions about whether we're going to have to replace the whole slab or not. Obviously, if we can keep it, that's much the better.
Is it the original slab?
I would be shocked if anybody has ever come in and put in, you know, done any work or maintenance. There's no sign that the barn, the barn was built once and, you know, that was all the love it ever got.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think it would be a good investment if it needed to be repaired or replaced.
Again, I mean, we're probably not going to be given a lot of options here. We're going to be told, look, this is the right way to do it and, you know, that's why we hire the professionals.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thanks very much. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak about this project? Okay. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. And does anyone want to share their thoughts?
Oh, I'm sorry, there is one more. So we had, Ben and I had a quick conversation in the break about the additional condition to make sure that the in-creek remediation work is completed before the town gives the final sign-off on the barn work. I just wanted to point out that the definition of completion on the project should probably be clarified because the conditions that we have with the JARPA acceptance involve, I think, five years of monitoring to see that the natural plantings take place, that this thing is actually gone in the way that it's been designed to go. I'd rather not wait five years to, you know, to get the final sort of sign-off on this from the town, but to instead declare a, you know, once the wall itself is built, then the town sees that the work in creek has been done or substantially completed and is willing to sign off on the, as complete on the barn work.
The completion of the, with Gary Roth, project manager on this, the completion of the, the substantial completion of the in-stream work really can't be done, we can start on June 15th and the window is to October 15th, but planting of that sort really wants to happen fall, like October, November for best plant mortality and that's sort of a typical restoration schedule. It actually works out fairly well to get it substantially complete, all the hard work, in-stream work done, and the only thing left to do is get the plants in prior to winter rains. And by, if we can be drilling in September, for instance, on the foundation, we don't have as much de-watering and it'll actually, holes and things like that for the foundation. So I think defining substantial completion will be actually important to the sequence of the work.
Do you think that you could, I'm sorry, through the chair?
Yeah, I guess we've reopened the hearing, so go ahead and ask your next question.
I think it would be helpful to hear from you on what you're recommending because you've heard staff and we have to boil down to a condition.
I would recommend the in-stream, substantial completion would be in-stream hard construction with heavy equipment and that the planting is a requirement of the permit for the in-stream work, but it really can't start until it'll be too late to start drilling. We don't want to be drilling in November, December because that's just going to create problems that you've already spoken to, that you don't want to see things getting into the creek and we don't want soft soils on the edge of that shoulder while they're drilling. So the best time to drill is going to be August, September, when the groundwater's low and the ground's really hard and...
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, really closing the public hearing this time and really bringing it back to the commission.
Yes, Madam Chair. Staff is comfortable that we could maybe tweak a couple of the wording on that, but the intention is that we make sure that the creek work is well along. Obviously, this has an ultimate five-year process, but that when we're talking about riprap and things like that, the intent is to make sure that we get the creek work done, the substantial creek work, however we define that, because that's critical to really service the foundation, for the foundation work. So we'll discuss some of the terminology, but I think, given the expertise that's available there, we can, at a staff level, largely work out what we're looking for in terms of finalizing the foundation.
Okay, Michelle?
I'm prepared to make a recommendation if we're ready.
Okay, before we get there, any other thoughts any of the commission wants to share?
I just have a thought. This is an amazing endeavor. Thank you for sticking with it. And, you know, this is maybe something, I don't know how we can tap into you as a resource. It seems like a lot of people would benefit from knowing what your process has been and what it takes. So, you know, the majority of people have no idea. I mean, this is very educational, so I don't know. But it's just something I want to put out there, that it seems like there's a lot of expertise and a lot of work that's gone into this. It would be great to have a presentation or something. So just something to keep in mind.
And I'll second that. I think it's rare when I get really excited about the package, like a particular thing gets me all like, oh, this is, I was drawing hearts on it and things like that.
And you thought she was taking notes?
I had the same reaction, just going through it.
Yeah, it's, the house is going to love you for this, so, you know, and the barn and all that. So if it's possible for real estate to love a person, it should love you for doing this. Yeah, I also, you're taking an incredible project and making it more livable, preserving a 1919 structure, historical structure perhaps?
The house is from 1919.
Okay, well, let's talk about adding some of these things to the history list. That's what I'm thinking. Whenever we have a project, by the way, staff, that mentions history or historical buildings, you know, we can sort of start adding those to a list perhaps. But this is an amazing project. The engineering is absolutely incredible and, you know, I wish you the best of luck.
All right, Michelle, I think your time is now.
All right. I'd like to recommend approval of Resolution Number 2018-03, which is to application 1802 for a conditional use permit and creek setback variance for the stabilization of the barn structure at Ten Court Lane, deleting, so amending that resolution to delete Conditions 16 and Condition 17 regarding the fire requirements in the wildland urban interface and adding a new condition to 4A, which is titled, "Prior to issuance of the final permit approval, the following shall be completed," and it lists A and B. And so we're adding C, that prior to the final inspection and occupancy of the shed, that it must be aligned with substantial completion of the stream bed hard construction under the JARPA permits. I'd also like to add to finding number one for general plan conformance, it reads, "The stabilization of the existing storage barn has been reviewed by the Fairfax Federal Emergency Agency Representative for Fairfax, who has indicated that the proposed building I'm adding is above the 100-year flood height and the stabilization project will not negatively affect." So I'm bringing in what you had in your staff report as to why this project should be approved. And that concludes my recommendation.
Is there a second?
Before a second, I totally agree with what you said. That was very, very well said. I was just, the applicant said that during the break, he discussed another condition with, and do we need to add that now too?
No, the focus of that was what entails substantial completion insofar as the JARPA permit will likely have a five-year term with this active monitoring and potential remediation. So that's where we're getting into the hard construction aspects, placement of the riprap, things like that.
Right, obviously, we don't want to make them wait five years. Right, okay. So I'll second that.
Great, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, your application is granted. There is a 10-day appeal period. And what does it cost to file that appeal, Linda?
$500.
$500. So if nobody appeals in the next 10 days, you'll be good to go. Thank you very much.
The whole thing. I didn't get any of it. I'm asking for another one. Yeah, I'd like to see this. I want to walk away with this. I want to keep this for myself.
I can leave our discussion. Someone in fact.
Okay, we are moving on to 26 Klaus Circle, Application 1805. And Principal Planner Neil.
The owners are proposing to convert and expand the existing 191 square-foot rear bedroom into a master closet and second bathroom and then add a new 280 square-foot master bedroom to the north side of the residence. The addition will increase the residence from a 1,037 square-foot, two-bedroom, one-bath residence into a 1,317 square-foot, two-bedroom, two-bathroom residence. So they're basically adding a bathroom, but they're not increasing the number of bedrooms. The town code requires that a conditional use permit be obtained prior to any use occupancy or physical improvement of or on a building site failing to meet the minimum 6,000 square-foot size and 60-foot width requirements. This project requires the approval of a use permit because the site is only 54.14 square-feet in size and, I'm sorry, 5,414 square-feet in size and 46.57 feet wide. So the addition will not encroach into the required setbacks and the resulting lot coverage and floor area ratio will comply with the regulations of the RS6 Zone District where the property is located. The addition will only reach 13 feet 4 inches in height, which is less than the existing 15-foot, 7-inch height of the rest of the structure. And it's well below the maximum 28.5-foot height allowed in the RS6 Zone District. It's basically a one-story house, so, and a two-story is allowed. Residents in the Klaus Drive neighborhood on similar-sized parcels range in size from a 1,254 square-foot, three-bedroom, two-bathroom residence on a 5,460 square-foot parcel to a 1,913 square-foot, two-bedroom, two-bathroom residence on a 5,342 square-foot parcel. Therefore, the proposed 1,317 square-foot house, it's not going to be out of scale with the size of the parcel or out of character with the Klaus Drive neighborhood. So therefore, we're recommending that you approve the project by adopting Resolution 2018-05, which sets forth the findings and the conditions for the project approval.
Thank you. Do we have any questions of staff by the commission?
Linda, can you clarify for me this fire sprinkler requirement? I'm really having difficulty with a 280 square-foot addition on level property, essentially on the valley floor, having to install fire sprinklers throughout the entire building. I just am not getting that. Can you tell me when this is required and not?
I could tell you what the fire department told me. Because I had the same question. So what they told me was that they don't, the garage doesn't count towards part of the square footage that's being modified. So you've got the whole addition, there's a sliding door going in, I guess a window or a regular door being replaced with a French door. So they are counting the new area and they're counting the entire living room as being modified. And the roof is tying in with the roof of the existing house. And so the way their ordinance reads, it's very similar to ours. They're counting it, they're calling it a 50% remodel.
Substantial remodel.
A substantial remodel, sorry, I'm using our terminology. They're calling it a substantial remodel. And I talked with them about it and I just think that, you know, they're going to require, they're going to get sprinklers into any house they can based on their definition. And so, you know, the owners have the ability to not put in the French doors, you know, I mean, they could have, they can modify it and they can still talk with the fire department. So that's, you can still negotiate with them. And we don't require them to come back to you if the fire department changes their mind or if they do a minor modification and get out of it somehow, but it's really the fire department requirement, so.
Thank you for the clarification.
That's the difference between saying 50% remodel or substantial remodel. You've got a lot of gray in the word substantial, whereas 50% is quantifiable, you can measure it and figure that out. But, you know, just, if the applicant has any qualms about, I'll get to that later.
I mean, so what the fire department has said to me is that when you're ripping up ceilings and roofs and connecting them, that is, that's the best time for them to get someone to put sprinklers in. And so that's where they're coming from.
Just, there was this fire at Trump Tower, right? And President Trump decided back when it was built not to put sprinklers in and someone died. So it's really, it's a big deal. It's a big deal, the fire sprinklers.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, thank you, Linda, and we will open the public hearing. I assume you are the applicant.
I am the applicant.
If you would like to come up to the podium, I will see if any of the commissioners have any questions for you.
Chairperson Newton, commissioners, I am Peter Brockman, the applicant.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant from the commission? Oh, well, you get off easy.
I was afraid of that. Thank you for trying to work that out with the sprinklers. I understand. And we're not ripping out ceilings in the living room, just the door, and that's fine. You know, and I agree with the fire sprinklers. If we have a chance, why not, right? So we'll see what the owners of the house say. And I'll talk to Robert at the fire department, see what he says. But thank you for, you know, thinking about all of you. No more questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else like to make a public statement? Okay, now I'm really closing the hearing, bringing it back to the commission, and anyone want to share their thoughts?
I have one minor change to REZO 2018-04. And we just need to, so at the bottom of page one, the paragraph that says, "Approval of the use permit will result..." of the use permit will result in equal or better development of the premises than would otherwise be the case. And I would add in there, because it improves the premises without adverse impact to Claus Circle, and that's at approval, et cetera. Does that, I like, I like the way the project doesn't affect the front part of the house, and it's just going to improve it and not, not impact the neighborhood much, so it's clever.
And right above that, I want to change general planer to general plan.
And along those lines, number 15 on page five at the top, and it's probably kind of like one of the generic paragraphs, I think it says, "Photosill that can be switched off only be a breaker," so it will remain illuminated at night, probably should be only by a breaker.
I was looking at the design standards for the rear setback, rear yard setback, and I was looking at the plans, and maybe I don't understand the numbers, but it almost looks like the expansion is 30 feet, or there's like a 30-foot deep, just, I'm just looking at the difference of the rear setback. It goes from 44 and a half to 14. Is that a mistake, or?
Page two?
Yeah, page two. Okay, I mean, I was going to bring that up, but I'm sorry, didn't have time.
Yeah, so I just rescaled it, it's 34 feet.
What did he say? 33.6, so it's actually, the existing is 33, I mean, scale's 33.6 or 34, right?
And then it's going to. I forget that it's going to 18 feet, actually. So it exceeds the required six.
I was just, I was comparing the setbacks with the drawings, and it wasn't computing, so just wanted to ask the applicant or somebody.
There you go, we just rescaled it.
Okay, all right. I mean, other than that, I think it's a great improvement. I think it's a nice design. I'm, you know, conflicted about the fire sprinkler issue because I saw that as well, and I thought, I don't understand where the requirement is coming, but I kind of understand the fire protection district's rule on that. So in the end, if the owner can afford it, it'll be good for all. But otherwise, I support the project. It's a good project.
Any other thoughts from the commission? Okay, does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll move approval of 26 Claus Circle residential single-family addition remodel of residence conditional use permit, application 1805.
I second the motion.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. So your application is approved. There's a 10-day appeal period with $500 cost of appealing, and if no one appeals, you will be good to go. Thank you very much.
Just think how much they'll enjoy that when it's done.
Okay, so moving right along, we have the general plan work program report from the planning director.
Thank you. First, I want to compliment the commission on moving right to these projects, getting to the substantive issues, but running a very efficient meeting, helped in small part by not having a throng of people that wanted to speak, but compliments, because it's nice to really focus in on the important issues and have a discussion of those and get through to the discussion, so.
But we welcome the throngs.
We certainly do. And where the issue warrants, I'm sure we'll get them. As some of the outcomes we're discussing tonight may precipitate, not tonight, though. So what we have here is an opportunity to once again kind of fine-tune what the commission has already looked at several times vis-à-vis workshop and at least two planning commission Very briefly, you know, some of the things were pretty much already settled, so what I took the opportunity to do was to flesh out some of the items that, for example, the town council had looked at, which I thought was very interesting, is, you know, this has always been kind of like, well, you know, what's the town council going to do when they finally look at this? And I think we're getting a pretty good idea based on their workshop and what their priorities were. So, you know, in noting that, that we have some definite consistency with respect to, for example, priority number one, the conservation, it'll be an interesting work program element in terms of how we link the downtown commercial area, historic preservation, with the council's stated desire to protect the character and address potential residential development, density limits, objective development standards. I mean, that's the brave new world we're in, where we would really like to preserve design review, and, you know, the type of nuanced discussions that I think we're very comfortable with and do a great job with. And yet, we've got this driving force that's removing local jurisdiction, sort of coming in with a meat axe to local control, and so we have to do what we can do. And also recognize that there's some genuine historic structures. I mean, it's amazing how these little gems pop up, and of course, you know, are they intact and things like that? But, you know, when you realize, for example, St. Rita's 1921, you know, things like that, where it's fascinating when you, when you look at some of the history, the pavilion, obviously Commissioner Caroline isn't here, but, you know, that's another, you know, gorgeous historic structure that isn't on any list per se and things like that. So I did have an opportunity to speak with Ms. Cassidy, and she is definitely interested in doing the work. I suspect that we will be involved with some sort of consultants at some point, just because to, especially to knit these disparate or only loosely related elements together and talk about commercial buildings and residential development of commercial buildings. And, you know, ultimately, the idea is not to prevent it, it's to do it in the style with which we are comfortable and meets with our various regulations and policies. And obviously, the provision of affordable housing is something that's addressed elsewhere. So any of that, with respect to the first one, that's something that we will be going to the council on May 2nd, staff, and discussing with them this same thing from their side of the equation and getting their feedback. And then ultimately, because that's also the first public hearing on the budget, the preliminary budget, and staff is recommending or requesting $50,000 consultant fees, consistent with what we requested this year, although we only spent a fraction of that because obviously there was turnover and some of the programs that were anticipating Town Center, et cetera, did not proceed forward. But I think that there's a given that we will be diving deep into these topics and looking for some assistance with that. Other elements, priorities four and five.
Excuse me, Ben, do we have a, is there going to be a budget workshop date?
Yes, that's going to be, the first one is on May 2nd. Oh, excuse me. The council will look at the first blush on the budget on the 2nd, and I believe the 25th, the 20th or the 25th will be the budget workshop. I'll get that date, it'll be, it'll be publicized. So, yeah, it's going to probably go most of the day. Some of the other ones, the visually significant areas, again, staff continues to work with a consultant, actually, I think we're calling this a contractor, to basically geo-reference and make more accurate and basically digitize that visually significant area map dating from the 1970s. This is somewhat important because Marinada Heights is in an area that arguably is, well, certainly is at least partially and maybe pretty much completely within that. So it's kind of good to get an idea of where those boundaries lie and, you know, overlay that on an accurate survey such as the applicant has provided of the property, and begin to make some policy calls and things like that. And then further down the road, perhaps consider tuning up those regulations that deal with ridgeline development. So all this ties into work programs that are high on the planning commission's priority list. The, I briefly mentioned the affordable housing density bonuses. I was just looking at Victory Village, I'll get into a quick mention of that in a moment. But, so the high priorities are, there's basically definitely overlap. The mayor has asked staff to convene a meeting with the Affordable Housing Committee. That'll occur probably sometime in June. And again, we'll be looking at the things that we can do, the designated affordable housing sites in the town. The council brought up tiny homes, which I'll probably have to do a lot more research on, you know, very interesting. Obviously, the potential for accessory dwelling units, the legislator, legislature and specific legislator who got SB 35 through, the accessory dwelling unit bill, apparently is coming back for a second helping. What I've heard is that it's going to eliminate floor area ratio maximums. So again, the trend at the legislature is to eliminate local discretionary review. And this is, you know, a trend that's been going on for decades. The two commissioners that were at the League of California Cities Conference heard speakers discussing this long trend towards the state asserting more and more control. And it creates a significant challenging community such as Marin in our, in our town, where we're very involved with planning and, you know, have been preserving the town's character, and you see this, this, in fact, to digress for a moment, Dan Walters, longtime columnist for the Sacramento Bee, was one of the plenary speakers, and he managed to pull out good old Marin County in the middle of his conversation, talking about how this, we've been using water as a weapon to prevent development. And I thought that was kind of ironic because there's no moratorium in Marin by and large, and yet he was sipping water at the DS in a community that has had an absolute moratorium in water hookups for over a decade. But I kept my arm down for that portion, not wanting to inflame the fires. In any event, it suffice to say that, you know, our little, small community attracts a lot of interest for probably all the wrong reasons, certainly it's misrepresented. Other elements being discussed, obviously, staff is aware that the lower priority items, seismic safety, fire safety, the only reason those are re-included is to just reference the fact that the council is picking up on fire safety with their own initiatives. And so what staff intends to do is to bring up the fact that within the commission's top 10 concerns, not really appropriately areas that the commission would work on, there is, there are a number of fire safety or seismic safety initiatives. I also had an opportunity to talk to the building official, and a lot of the seismic retrofit work is taking place. I think the main concern, from what I could tell, is that there are some existing multifamily residences that have what's known as soft frame or space frame. And that's basically where you have the habitable areas over what's pretty much an open parking area. And what they saw in Loma Prieta quake in the Marina area was, when you have those, it basically racks, and you just drop a story. And if it's leaning against, in the Marina, if it's leaning, if the buildings are close together, you get a domino effect too. So the idea is, you know, obviously, that's not in our immediate work program, but in an ideal world, you would look at that and say, is there ways that we could provide information? There is some information out there to the owners of those properties to invest in the type of bracing that might minimize the damages to those structures and to the inhabitants in the event of an earthquake. I thought that the 7B was interesting because we had our night lighting presentation tonight. And, you know, one of the things is, that's one of those hidden pollution items that does have a major impact on, I mean, I guess they talk about some of the high rises where they just find the ground littered with migratory birds in the morning because they think there's the sun, and they just kind of circle it until they drop of exhaustion and die, that kind of stuff. Not to mention the fact that, you know, things like architectural lighting where it's up in the trees, you know, it's like, come on, really? You know, in terms of wasting energy.
Clinton, 47, right.
So that's something that I don't, we probably don't have the bandwidth to really get into, except that it's, it would be a good idea, and it probably wouldn't take a whole lot to say that exterior lighting shall be fully shielded, and there shall be no architectural uplighting. I mean, if we're going to start getting into zoning revisions, which is certainly staff's hope, that we would have the opportunity to just kind of nudge some other things along, we have to be very strategic, though, and the chair has rightfully reminded me of the need to be very strategic and focused, given our very limited bandwidth to do any of this work, even the ones that are the highest priorities. The post-disaster, I had an opportunity to go into some of my notes with the work I'd been doing at the county level, and, you know, this ties into a higher priority, post-disaster recovery ordinance and preserving community character. And also addressing a number of really important issues when we're looking at post-disaster ordinances. What happens is that you can recover from a natural disaster much better, much more efficiently, in a much more focused manner, and certainly much more in keeping with community desires if you have those type of planning programs and documents and that community process already occurring or having occurred. When you get a major natural disaster, the feds come in and basically just stomp all over everything, and it's like, okay, we're going to put our debris staging area right here, and, you know, it could be in a location that just doesn't make sense. So these are the type of things where you say, hey, you know, one of the major expenses, one of the major hassles is, what do you do with debris? So, I mean, they're, boy, they're seeing that in spades up in the fire zones. So those are the type of conversations you say, hey, if it's a two-year process of rebuilding and, you know, multi-months, and you're just getting the stuff out of there, you know, maybe we should be talking about, is there a location that we would define as most appropriate? Similarly, things like if some of our supermarkets are damaged, you would probably want to be able to say, put in tents in the parking lot, ignore parking, get your, get your stocks back in there. What they find is in the aftermath of disasters, if people aren't, if people have to leave the community, a significant percentage of them never come back. So the idea is, and especially the most vulnerable people, that, the example, I talked to the disaster coordinator in Napa County, and he said that in downtown Napa, there was one Safeway, and it was closed for six months. And there are all sorts of people up there who don't have access. And there are all sorts of people up there who don't have access to vehicles, you know, people working in the wine industry and things like that, tremendous impact on them. So those are the type of things that you start to discuss in a post-disaster context where you say, hey, we're going to override all our normal stuff and facilitate this so that business owners, FEMA, et cetera, everybody knows that this is the process, this is what we envision to enable a community, our community, to recover as quickly as possible and to direct where some of these efforts are focused and things like that. And this is something that, you know, I would certainly look forward to working with the commission on in this upcoming year. Challenges, and we got further into this in discussing some of the zoning ordinance amendments, specifically looking at things like eliminating the time that development applications can remain incomplete. What we did was, I think there were questions by the commission last time about, what are we really talking about? I mean, how does this work? And so what we did was kind of just laid out a process that we feel would provide applicants with the knowledge upfront when they apply for projects, that the expectation is that they're going to proceed in a reasonably diligent manner towards completing that project. And so this, this just lays out what we would include in zoning amendments that would address that type of thing. The town council, even though this is unrelated to that, but the town council did discuss zoning amendments. They're talking about limiting maximum size of residences. I have no idea what was precipitating that. But in any event, you know, this idea that there's currently a 5,000 square foot limit, again, you know, assuming we have discretionary control, we usually do a very good job of deciding what is appropriate and how and things like that. On an unrelated matter, dealing with the wall property, Miranda Heights subdivision, I put a link to the project incompletion letter that was written on that project. It was very extensive. There are lots of things that the applicant, either the architect, never got around to describing in adequate detail for the design review portion of the project, or his consultants, the drainage consultants, et cetera, didn't really address. There was a Fairfax Open Space Committee meeting where the audience was very upfront about their concerns, for example, with respect to slope stability. And this is something that their geotechnical and drainage people never addressed, some of the downslope, downflow neighbors and issues that they have had. It will be, staff will be meeting with the applicant to go over these incompletion items. I suspect that some of these we will be recommending that we move the completion of to the environmental review phase. This will enable fresh eyes to be looking at this problem. It will also create an appearance that there will be an objective analysis. I'm not in any way besmirching the applicant's consultants, but it's simply at some point you need to say, you know, at a minimum, you're going to have peer review. And in some instances where, for example, they didn't address downslope drainage issues, that needs to take place. There's been a long history of that. I don't have a lot of paper information, but that would be part of the discovery process. Other aspects of the subdivision, Lot 10, which would come in off of Ridgeway Avenue, they have a major challenge in terms of where the existing physical paved access is with respect to the public right-of-way. Historically, there was a development proposed up near the top of the ridge there that ran into that same problem. So they're going to need to address that issue, obviously, is where's the right-of-way? Where are the improvements going relative to the right-of-way? And, you know, these type of things also create the potential to open up additional lots for development. For example, the prior two lots that were previously proposed for development that that application went away. Obviously, if the applicants resolve the access to the proposed Lot 10, it will open up those two lots to development. It's, as a technical term, under SEQA language, it's reasonable and foreseeable and therefore needs to be evaluated. And that's something that I'm going to very strongly recommend be taken, done by our environmental consultants. So those are some of the areas that we'll be exploring as we get into the, the wall property.
Can I say before you leave that topic, that I read your letter, your non-complete letter, I thought it was fantastic. Amazing details and that they leave out, and it's incredible what they've left out, actually. So, good, good job.
Well, thank you. And I want to point to the principal planner sitting next to me, she did a lot of the work on the individual lots. You know, we were looking together and, and it's just, you know, it's really important because when you're looking at a big piece of land and big picture items, and at the same time, there's a design review application and the type of information, we're at one lot in, in a very visually prominent area, we would be extremely concerned about things like, well, what's the maximum height, you know, and how are you describing it and things like that? So, yeah, there was a lot, lot of our spend on that.
Thank you, both of you. Really did a great job.
Other zoning amendments, so, you know, this, this goes down the list, and I'm sure you've all looked at the discussion. Staff attempted to organize it in a way that, you know, kind of put the, the major bullet points out there. Covered parking, tandem parking, you know, I think there was a kind of a consensus of the commission to consider uncovered parking, for example. Tandem parking, not in the side yard. I'll be very curious to see the commission's comments in that regard. Administrative review for parcels that are substandard in size or width, simply pointing out that we run into these, you know, I think there was a project tonight that had something, yeah. So, and what we're pointing out here is that we can do, oh, I also want to clarify, I didn't get it in my report and I apologize, but the difference between ministerial, administrative and public hearing review of projects. I think the thing is to just break it into discretionary and nondiscretionary. When you go to a ministerial review, for example, what the state's telling jurisdictions they have to do with accessory dwelling units, if they meet setbacks and things like that, basically, they come in and they apply for a building permit. That's ministerial. Whether it's administrative or a public hearing process, those are discretionary reviews. And what we're saying on page 10, item three, is that we're recommending that staff take over some of the more inconsequential applications, the less than 50 square foot additions on the houses, that because the lot is currently substandard in width or size, but the application otherwise meets all our standards, now they get to, you know, take the several months or a couple of months to go to the planning commission. What we're thinking is that we could do the public notice, we could monitor it for controversy, and we could write up a decision that anybody who's interested could review. And if they, well, the first thing is if there is controversy, you know, people, they're usually pretty upfront about if they're not happy about a project, we would refer it to the planning commission because it doesn't serve anybody to say, okay, now let's require you to submit an appeal and then wait longer, et cetera. Our attitude is, if there's smoke, let's let you guys be the firemen to put that out. Excuse me. So that's another consideration that would enable us to process applications in the same manner that we have been doing, or largely the same manner, but do it administratively. Tree permit requirements. It didn't come up much tonight, but the tree removals are imbued in many of the projects that we review discretionary applications. We live in a forest, people love to have trees on their property, and then when they expand, they, they run into the roots or the canopy or both, or they could affect it. Right now, we obviously have this process where if they are removing a tree, they have to go to the tree committee. It creates a very awkward situation, I believe it was described as a toothless dragon by one of the tree committee members, where they're, after the applicant has spent tens of thousands of dollars on plans and gotten approval by the planning commission, it puts the tree committee in an awkward position to say, no, we think that you're affecting this tree, so you have to redesign your whole project and start from scratch. The idea is to provide the commission with the training, and that would specifically be Ray Moritz, led by Ray Moritz, I would be assisting him, but to provide you with the background. Commissioner Curling has been on the tree committee, gosh, I don't know how many years. There's also a lot of really good information available about what type of things adversely affect trees. And I know some commissioners are extremely diligent and studious about that, so I wouldn't be surprised in a very short amount of time with the references to those documents, that there would be a very high level of knowledge about how to review projects vis-à-vis tree impacts. So the suggestion is that when the planning commission is reviewing a discretionary application that involves tree removal, that they take over the responsibility to process the tree permit application. And just avoid that kind of, a lot of process without making any difference that we currently have. Another question is allowing ministerial review of certain applications. And specifically, and again, this was discussed at the last planning commission meeting, and we hope we got the sense of what the commission's consensus was. But we believe that where there is a fence height variance being processed, where the fence lies between two private property owners, that staff would take over the review of that, not require somebody to go to the planning commission. We would, we could have standards there where, you know, setbacks and screening and things like that, but just make it possible for two property, private property owners work out what they desire, and then we simply process it administratively rather than, you know, again, this multi-month process before the planning commission. And as you can see from our work program, we have some really big things that we're going to be working on. Another aspect would be encroachment permits, and I think the commission's consensus was that where we're looking at things like stairways that are close to grade, fine, you know, what does it affect? Nothing really. Yeah, and then the over-height accessory structures, that one would still stay with the, with the planning commission. Another element, dealing with expirations, has to do with discretionary permits. It's, it's actually a three, three-element issue. One is where applicants, and we have a number of them right now, that are years stale in a, in an incomplete status. That's the main thing, is we just want to get rid of those ones and bring our review standards up to date and make sure that when they get their technical studies, that those are current. I mean, all those things have expirations. So another thing, though, is once people get discretionary permit approval, that that also comes with expiration dates. And the idea being is that because our regulations do adapt over time, it's to make people get a move on and take something through to completion, or basically explain why. If we run into a situation like the economic downturn in 2008 through, you know, 2010, you know, that would be, more likely, we would just be like saying, yeah, fine. Or we could bring that back to the council and say, our intention is to grant extensions in those situations. The 50% remodel definition to match Ross Valley Fire Department's definition, Linda spoke with Commissioner Gonzalez Parmer, and I think the idea there is just recognizing, and we saw it tonight, that the fire department has some really strict triggers, and was it worthwhile to try to link our two up? And I think the discussion amongst staff and hopefully the commission was that there's some pretty good reasons why we, for example, say, if you're adding a bedroom, we want that to be considered a major remodel. And the fire department, I don't know if we want to say that if you're changing a sliding door or putting in a French door in a room and that's it, that we're going to say, you know, that's part of your 50%. You know, they're doing it for safety reasons, but I think there, our recommendation is that difference remain different. In terms of appeals, yeah, that's just reminding that even if, you know, somehow staff does a decision that people don't like, that can always be appealed. And then wrapping up, there is a cannabis workshop scheduled with a consultant who works with governments on regulatory aspects. That's preliminarily scheduled for May 30th. That would be a joint workshop with the planning commission. I think just the council would be up at the, up at the DS. But the idea is that if planning commissioners wanted to attend, and I've been pushing this because I believe that really quickly now, they're going to hand the cannabis regulation discussion over to the planning commission. I think the commission needs to be aware of governmental regulatory issues and questions and points that this expert's going to be making. So I would certainly recommend that you all put that in your calendar and attend if you can.
It's 7 o'clock on May 30th?
It'll be an evening meeting. I don't know the exact time, but we'll, we'll send out that notice well ahead of time. Another thing that came up at the League of California Cities Conference, and I'll let the chair and the vice chair comment when, when the, when they have their opportunity. But it was an excellent conference, the power outages, et cetera, notwithstanding. But the email, there's, there's questions about public record acts requests, and basically when you start to mingle private email accounts, you open those accounts up to somebody reviewing it for town business. And an example would be Miranda Heights, which may be subject to legal challenge, and there may be conversations or communications. The town email address is available, and in the interest of protecting your private email addresses, staff certainly recommends that you add a town email address. Michelle Gardner, the town clerk, knows how to develop that, and I would be, you know, happy to help you set that up.
Don't we have those? I thought we had town address.
Some do and some don't. I think there are two people, or three, with Michelle being new on the commission, that don't have it.
Just a question on that, though, we're still getting the packages and emails through regular email and not the, you know, those addresses are linked up to Outlook Online system.
Okay. So you're getting it through your regular address. We should change that to a town.
Right. So that's, that's, we're, the output from you guys is still through regular email, you know, and I try to communicate with the other system in, but it doesn't always.
Okay. We'll, we'll get that switched over as soon as possible. And like I said, just let me know if the people who are not on that and desire to do it, there may be, you know, people just say, look, I'll deal with those issues when I have to. But it's just one of those potential for litigation questions.
I think we have to get everybody on because it gets so busy on packet days. If I have to try to remember who to send to the town addresses and who to send to their old addresses, I'm not.
Yeah, we'll, we'll work out the details of that. We'll just give them a group, create a group.
Just keeping you on your toes, Linda. As if.
Victory Village, Garrett and I met with representatives of, and they indicated that they are still seeking sufficient funding. One of the consequences of the Santa Rosa-Napa fires is that construction costs have gone up about 15% in one year, and as reflected in the bids that they're getting back. They were also to try to secure additional grant funding. They have included a percentage of the residents to be formerly homeless individuals. These, these would be permanent housing for them. It would be senior only, and seniors defined as 62 years of old, and these are Marin residents. So, but they're still working on putting that together, and I do not know if they'll be successful in this current funding cycle. If not, they will be reapplying in the June funding cycle, and, you know, stay tuned. And as we learn more, we'll certainly pass it through to your. and as we learn more, we'll certainly pass it through to your. Something, the final thing is, is that one of the nice outcomes of the League of California Cities is they had a specific Q and A about Commission communication with staff. And it was very apparent from the legal experts, et cetera, is that this is a normal practice in many jurisdictions and is not discouraged. Obviously, it can't be in the context of forming opinions or things like that, but if you have questions about projects, the nice thing is, is it provides an opportunity for staff to do a little research. So if individual Commission members get their packet and they're just like, gee, what's this, or what that, or it could be independent of that. If you just have questions, don't feel uncomfortable about shooting staff an email, asking us that question, or setting up a meeting. That's what we're there for. I think that helps to run an efficient meeting, and certainly the hours getting later, and I'm responsible for part of that, and I apologize, but the idea is, to the extent that we can facilitate your knowledge and running an efficient meeting, we're here to do that. So if you have questions ahead of time, ask away and we'll respond. And I'm sure you have some questions, or maybe not.
Who's got, who's got questions?
Well, I guess I do about a process here. So it seemed like you kind of went into your Planning Director's report as well as going over item five, right?
Yes.
Okay. So for the Chair, how are we addressing, how do you want us to address any comments on item five?
Okay, so item five is the General Plan Work Program. Let's address our questions to number five. I thought the report was this League of California Cities legislative update, but maybe I'm mistaken.
That was in response to prior Commission requests, just to give an idea of what's going on. And I previously sent some of the housing bills that the League of California City also provided an update on, so I figured that was secondary importance. This was, this is basically just a tune-up to what the Commission has already discussed. So there's two, two memos, one's very brief and the other one is too long, and it's called Work Program Priorities, and that's what I was discussing.
Right, so Commissioner Swift, I'm a little confused as to what report, I mean, I see that on number four, no, sorry, number six, report from Ben Berto, but what we just heard was number five. So if we can ask, focus our questions on the Work Program Priorities report.
Right, but I think, I guess what I was saying is, I think he was going into his Planning Director's Agenda Report, that would be seven or eight on, on the agenda, and I just, kind of mixing the two, right? So going back to Agenda item five.
Why don't you ask whatever questions pertain to what he discussed, whether or not you think it's report or work program?
Right, okay. So going down the priorities on here, so these were in our priority order, in essence, is what you're saying on here.
More or less, not, because we had the votes, and then we basically, what I think you could almost do is just say, upper half, lower half, upper half being the ones that...
Okay, so when this goes to the Council, what are you providing the Council?
I will be combining the Commission's comments tonight and reformatting this and basically saying, these are the work program priorities that we would like to work on and that we're seeking your direction on.
Okay, all right. So let me go through those with the comments that I had in reading through this. So on the historical preservation, we've got there, assuming the Town Council supports an integrated approach, that you would have Cassidy help in developing policies and regulations for the preservation, so that's kind of broader than the initial step of, of doing the inventory. Just kind of making that comment, but also I want to make sure that we include in there that there's the understanding that we also need to know what the regulatory agencies, their requirements, state and federal, are so that we understand, you know, what, what each of those programs may provide us, okay?
And so a point of clarification from the Chair. So Commissioner Swift is now bringing up potential changes to the language here that maybe we agreed to previously, and so how are now we going to address changes that are being brought up?
Well, I would propose that we let Cindy talk about them, and we all take turns talking about our own issues, and maybe as we do that, responding to the ones that the prior commissioners have raised.
Okay, on lighting, we had the lighting presentation tonight, and I would just want to make sure that we include there, if we're looking at lighting regulations, that we also include our sign ordinance in that, because that's also a lighting issue, one of the things that the Speaker didn't have a chance to address, but there's also signage and coloring of lights. So when you go to some of those Dark Skies websites, it talks about LED lights and the color of lights, and that blue lights, bluish tones of lights are very harmful. So since we have lighted signs, if we're going to look at this kind of holistically, then it should be signage and lighting, okay? On the parking, just wanting to address, you know, that we haven't had a survey since 2003. The general plan talks about no net loss of parking, and I know parking's going to be a broader issue for the town. A question for you on the zoning, oh, and I guess the safety programs, I know in the general plan was talking about the fire hazard abatement district, do we even, since that's...
My intention is to simply mention that the Commission, although they recognize it was completely outside their scope, also believes that this is a high priority, and so as we're looking at the general plan implementation, I mean, it's not just Planning Commission or the Fire, I mean, ultimately, it's the Town Council. So I'm just going to say, these were within their top 10 concerns, so.
And I guess, you know, from the, I think fire safety is a concern, I'm not sure that we all agreed that pursuing an abatement district was a concern. I'm just kind of clarifying that from my perspective on that. On the zoning ordinance amendments, it mentioned if any application fees remain unexpended, these would be refunded to the applicant. So I just kind of had a question about how we utilize their, their fees, that there would be some left to return?
Well, the idea is, it doesn't happen a lot, but sometimes an applicant will submit an application materials, and they get a project, you know, incompletion letter, and we never hear back from them again. And so obviously, our fee schedule is predicated on them completing the project, going to the Planning Commission, staff reports, et cetera. So then the idea is, even on a non-deposit-based application, if somebody just basically drops off the application, we never hear from them again, that we would look at things like, you know, we didn't spend all that application money. I think as a practical matter, looking at our fee schedule, we probably come pretty close because our fees are a little bit low, but those are the things we'd look at.
Okay, on the administrative review items on page 11, it talks about, except, the Commission in March agreed to recommend changing the zoning to allow projects that comply with all the regulations for the zone district and the project is located in, except for lot width be administratively reviewed. But then it goes down as a side note and talks about lot size and width, so is that just stating that, that that was staff's preference, or, okay?
Yeah, and I'm glad you caught that because I was hoping to tease that out as a discussion item. So what we're, we're also thinking that if a project complies with all the setbacks, but it's 5,800 square feet instead of 6,000, it would be under the same recommendation. I would be very interested in getting Commission discussion on that.
On the trees, and we've had kind of some recent tree cuttings in town that I've seen some, some discussion on. Is this, I guess, talking about having the town arborist review this, any proposed changes? I would hope we would have the Tree Committee weigh in on that as well. And would there be consideration of differences between a downtown and a neighborhood?
I hadn't thought about that. I mean, the idea, again, it's, it's to avoid this unfortunate bifurcated process that it adds process to no appreciable result. They never turn down applications or really change them once the Planning Commission's been through it, so.
Right, but there's, I guess, two things. There's, there's if a project has a tree component in it, an application, but then there's also, aside from that, maybe I'm getting a little confused here, just the straight, I'm not doing, I don't have a project, I'm not coming in with an application to do something, but there's the straight off, a tree needs to be removed somewhere.
Right, and without veering off into the recent events, we're not going to turn the Planning Commission to the Tree Committee, so if it's straight trees, and I think they typically have from six to 15 tree applications, so we would be removing the Planning Commission discretionary application projects that involve tree removal from their purview, but leaving them the vast majority of what they look at on a monthly basis, which are the pure tree removal projects.
So all you're saying is, is the piece that they would not be addressing trees as part of a application, a planning application?
Correct.
But there's the other aspect in here of the administrative review by staff, that's new to, that's, that's a new approach to the tree ordinance. So that's the other piece that, that I speak to as well.
Yeah, I mean, we consider that kind of minor, if a tree's dead and they have an expert that tells us it's dead, and frankly, you know, you can walk up to a tree with a knife and tell if it's dead, but those are the type of things where I think staff can handle that.
So, so.
The encroachment permits, again, my general feeling on that, and you sort of touched on that with, with the stairs, is that the public right of way, I think, you know, other than those minor things like that, really needs to come before the Planning Commission because it's the public right of way?
Yeah, we got that as a sense of the Commission as well, so that would be our recommendation.
And then the height of accessory structures, you mentioned on page 12, over-height accessory structures, so a question.
Yeah, that's just to clarify that based on the Commission feedback, we're, we wouldn't be recommending that to the Town Council. I just wanted to be responsive to the Commission's direction last time and say, that's not going to be on the table for a change that we would recommend. I just wanted to point out that we, we caught that direction and we're taking that off the table.
For any, okay, it wasn't clear from this that that was...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, staff is not suggesting staff review of over-height accessory buildings such as storage shed or garage, so. Well, yeah, if it's over 15 feet, we heard loud and clear, Commission's like, we want to look at that.
Or shade structures.
Anything.
Anything. Discretionary permit approval expirations, I agree with that. Just clarification in here, and I think I mentioned it last time, that the, the expiration date should be relevant to what the permit is for, so in the sign ordinance, it's not a year, it's six months.
Okay.
Okay, so just, you know, thinking through that for everything that we would have a permit for.
Could I question why a signed permit would be that much shorter of a timeframe?
It's in the code, I don't know. It says, "All approvals granted by the Planning Commission shall expire within six months unless acted upon by the issuance of a building permit or the erection of the approved sign." And the Planning Commission could grant an extension of the extension period by six months. And maybe they just think a sign doesn't take as long to put up.
It's just accessory.
Can I, can I ask a question, just clarification for that? Are you talking about, so there's a permit application process and fees, the project gets approved. Once it's approved, the clock starts, okay?
That's correct.
And Cindy, what you're talking about is on the approved permit, so it says six months?
For signs.
If, if somebody comes to us, so for example, the monument sign at 31 Valinus came before us, so that approval was, permit was six months, and then they could have come back for an extension of six months.
But it, doesn't it still have to go through, through your process after it's approved by the Planning Commission?
Well, it would be, at that point, it would be an extension.
At that point, it would be an extension. So what, what we're talking about right now is specifically for discretionary permits for...
And what that, that sign permit would get a discretionary permit, but then it would still need a building permit.
Right.
So it talks in here that it will expire within six months unless it's acted upon by the building permit. So if you didn't come in, it expires for a building permit for that sign within six months.
Okay, so, so I'm talking about something else, what I'm talking about is different. So I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't talking about the same thing.
Yeah, and again, any of these zoning changes, it's more like a concept, and if we get the agreement, we keep it fairly conceptual before the Town Council, and then we come back to the Commission and start to go.
Yeah.
Yeah, application by application, what's appropriate. I mean, we heard comments about, sometimes you have seasonal requirements that push you out past a year or things like that, so we would certainly discuss that and come up with the appropriate time limits and extension periods, et cetera.
And I think on the Ross, the substantial remodel and the 50%, I want to see them stay separate, for I think, you know, between the Fire Departments and our, I mean, and tonight was a good example of why. And just one last question, if there is an administrative process on some of these, you would put out a notice if there's any concerns who would come to the Planning Commission?
Well, if it were somebody who lived across town and they, you know, wrote a letter opposing it, and they, you know, they weren't going to see it or something like that, we might say, you know, sometimes people might abuse that process, but if it's, for example, if it's a next-door neighbor... for example, if it's a next door neighbor, we would take it to the planning commission. I mean, we, there would be a certain level of, if it's something where it's like, what's, how does this affect you? If it's an addition that all the neighbors are in agreement, somebody is like, no, I hate this project, you know, we might just say, fine, file an appeal, something like that. The idea is to have a process that moves smoothly and not, you know, avoid this kind of punitive aspect of a longer process. So there'd be some discretion, but for the most part, if there were, if there were controversy, controversy, we would refer it to the commission.
Okay, and I, I guess I would just be concerned that if there is concern by the public, that it, that we look at, it does get some kind of a, a public hearing. And that discretionary piece there kind of concerns me where we make those, those decisions.
Just a thought. So what Ben's trying to say is that we would make the decisions to the best of our ability, but if a, if a neighbor didn't like our decision, they could appeal it to the council. That, that's still going to be in the code.
Or to the commission, probably. Well, we would figure that out.
Right, but I mean, there's going to be, no matter what decision we make, if they're unhappy with it, there's going to be an appeal to some, somebody, right? Somebody besides, it's not just going to be staff making the decision. There's a way to go over our heads. There's always a way to go over our heads.
Well, generally, the appeal process works, like, if, if there was a lower level decision made, the appeal would come to us probably before the town council, because we, we would be the step before. And then if someone had to appeal our decision, they'd go to the town council and otherwise go to court.
That's, that's a change that has to be made to the code, because right now, the code just has people appeal to the council.
Right, right, right. But I agree totally with Commissioner Swift. I think there needs to be, even with projects, I mean, how do we find out if something's controversial if the public doesn't know about it? So there needs to still be a notice process, you know, and, right, and, and the ability for the public, the 500 feet around and the ability of those people to get to you, of course, they can, they can, you, you're very open and accessible, et cetera. And they just need, we just need to make this public knowledgeable of the process so that they have the chance to, you know, to, to, to come here if they don't like something. You do. I'm, I'm kind of concerned about that as well, because we get audiences, you know, sometimes really full audiences and controversies, and you just, sometimes you just never know what the project is going to be that causes music typically, but other than that, you know, I think we need to have a process. So that's something to talk to town council about. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Commissioner Swift?
That's okay. And, and I guess the, the following on that, the question is, you know, is the difference between somebody within that 300 feet being notified and being concerned versus somebody outside that 300 feet who may have a concern and how you process that and how they're even made aware. So just some thoughts on that.
Yeah, that, that conversation about notification, in the fullness of time, I'd love to have applications posted on a website, and you sign up, much like we're doing with the wall property, where, you know, every time we post something new, they get that information. They've done that at the county with projects where you basically, you sign up, in this case, it would be townwide, and you just say, sign up for our application notification.
You can, you can subscribe to different categories of projects.
Right, but we're, that would be a major, that would be a major...
Right, right. So, so the county has a system like that. So if you want to, like I do, I get notifications about certain coastal commission or whatever projects that relate to some of my client stuff. So you can sign up, and I think that's a great idea, but it might be expensive, I don't know, but it'd be, that's, that's one way to do this, I think.
Yeah, the, the challenge is, is that you're adding a layer of application processing in it. There's a timeliness aspect. So again, you'd have a webmaster who'd be responsible for posting it, then the question would be, you know, are we posting all the plans along with it? Because it's, you know, the notice doesn't really tell you a lot. So it's basically a, a commitment to a type of process, an electronic web-based process with an ongoing expectation for doing that into the future. It's not a, it's not a small thing to consider. The hope is, and you know, one thing to keep in mind, too, is when we're talking about administrative review, we're talking about tiny projects. I think the flip side is, you know, if the planning commission is reviewing, I mean, we had some additions that were less than 50 square feet that otherwise complied, and that's...
Right. So just in the interest of keeping us moving ahead, does anybody else want to take their turn? Or Cindy, you were done? Okay, does anybody else want to take a turn, kind of going through and saying their thoughts here?
I could, let me real quick. I, I really enjoyed this item five. I thought it was really on point, actually, and just a couple of comments, really. Okay, so on page 11, you know, I had the same comment about that Commissioner Swift just raised, is some, and, and I know this is a balance, because you guys are trying to, you know, cut the administrative processing time for these things. I don't know how you're going to balance it, but it's something to talk to the town council about, is what, maybe really carefully defining what these small projects are would be a helpful thing. That's maybe one suggestion. And, and am I understanding this, the streamlined tree permit requirements are only if the tree is in danger that the staff would only handle it, or is there, is it more general than that?
Well, we were recommending that if the tree's dead or diseased or, or damaging residents.
So that, that's the, that's the parameter that would trigger it for staff review?
Right.
But it ha, but they, it has to be accompanied by a report by an ISA certified arborist. It's not just us taking the owner's word that it's damaging the house. We would want an expert to back that up.
Right, okay, that's just a clarification point. I don't, I don't, on the number seven, the town definition of 50% remodel, I don't generally like the idea of the substantial remodel definition, because it's just too loosey goosey in a way, and it just, I mean, see what the Ross Valley Fire Department did to this project tonight because of a door? Come on, I mean, I, I agree with, we need fire sprinklers, but I don't agree how, you know, they're going to, I think that's the best business to be in these days, is fire sprinkler contractor, you know? Boy, that's, that's great.
Through the chair, could I get a commission consensus on that? Because I'd love to just drop that whole discussion and not even show it to the council if there's a consensus that we want to leave it as is.
Which, which, can you say that?
Leaving the 50% remodel instead of substantial remodel?
Yeah, because it's a game that's played by the fire department, so.
Yeah, okay, good, thank you.
I guess I, I was saying, no, I don't agree, because I don't really understand, I thought it, this was being put in here so we could discuss that issue that was brought up this evening and how it relates to that. So I'm afraid to say no if we're not going to address the issue that keeps coming up. Or is that totally a separate issue unrelated to this? And if that is, then I'm fine with not.
I, I think how we approach the fire department's handling of substantial remodels is a separate topic. I mean, you know, part of the problem's much like the, the fire safety stuff, is maybe at some point, we have a workshop, and we invite the fire marshal in, and he can discuss the rationale, and, you know, we could have that conversation. But really, the question we're, we're trying to get to here is, should we sync up the language in the two codes? And, and I think that the consensus that I'm seeing is, no, just, we, we like our bedroom trigger for that, so that we can look at parking, and we don't want to be saying, you've got to, do, it's a 50% remodel because you changed a slider to a French door, whatever they did tonight. Anyway, yeah.
Exactly. I mean, you can, you can buy the plans, you can define if it's 50% or not. You can, you can figure that out. And, and we can say then, of course, this has nothing to do with fire sprinklers, because we can't make those decisions. But in our town code, you know, it's, it just gives, gives the public more to understand than substantial remodel. What does that mean? You know, public 50% remodel, okay, we get that, you know, but a door? That, that, to me, that tonight, this thing was, I thought crazy. Even though I, even though I supported the idea of the fire sprinklers, I don't support the idea of adding a door makes it, triggers it. That's crazy.
Okay, anybody else want to weigh in here? All right, well, I have some thoughts. You know, you just kind of go through the report in order here. On the conservation program, on page two and three, bottom line for me, it sounds like there's nothing for the planning commission to do on that right now. Same with the visually significant areas map, and the open space program. I'm wondering if there's anything we can do on the homeless and affordability issues and the tiny homes. And maybe, Ben, you and I can put our heads together on something like, you know, we had a really great presentation tonight on light pollution, and maybe we can do another session on innovative solutions for homelessness in Marin County and focus on that as we move down. I think on number five, all of these ideas are, appeal to me, all these bullets you've got in that number five housing. And I really liked your example at the bottom of page four about the tier system as an example of sort of the differences between these two types of bonuses, because it, it really had been hard for me to get my head around that. So I really appreciated that example. On the land use issues, preserving neighborhood scale and character after wholesale destruction. I hear what you guys are saying about sort of that being a larger, longer term project, but I'd also like to hear what little baby steps, short term, we might be able to undertake. On number seven, maybe, you know, obviously, I think most of these things you're saying, you're going to go back to the council and get feedback from them and hopefully bring back to us. But I would like some recommended concrete next steps on that one at some point. And the same with the light pollution. I like Cindy's idea about the signage. And I wasn't really focused too much on either 8A or B, since it didn't really look like those are within our purview anyway. The Creek Master Plan, I guess I have the same comment on those. Are there little things we can do, looking at other municipalities, talking with Marin County before the end of 2018? Maybe it just start down that road. I'm wondering, that last paragraph under the housing program, before you get to the zoning ordinance amendments, maybe you could explain what you envision the planning commission's role on that parking discussion, what might be?
Well, this is one of those technical topics that I'd love to tap into somebody who's an expert, because I know that they've done a lot of discussion about what's appropriate downtown areas. I mean, part of this is, you know, trying to encourage transit, but, you know, the flip side is, do you have parking littered everywhere, or vehicles littered everywhere? So, yeah, additional discussion, and this is a planning, a town council priority, evidently. I'd just not, you know, we'll see how much bandwidth we have for this stuff.
Yeah, I mean, I heard Commissioner Swift say, we definitely need the parking survey at some point, so that's going to be on our radar.
And I think that last paragraph there talks, refers back to the council previously discussing managed parking in the downtown, so that broader topic of, of addressing that that way.
Right, and because it's sort of the town council seems to be taking the lead, much like with the cannabis, I feel like we're, at this point, there's nothing, really, we just sit and wait for the town council to tell us what we ought to be doing.
Right.
I, I did mention what they do in Sweden regarding parking and EV spots, right? The EV spots are free, other, all other parking is paid. That's, my cousin from Sweden told me this.
Instead of incentivizing.
Of course, they're a communist country, too, so have to take that into consideration.
I don't want to get into too much detail, but on the one about the stale applications expiring, I, I want to think about the idea that somebody has been acting in good faith to get stuff in, and maybe they just don't have every T crossed and I dotted. So take that into account. Would you want to be able to have the discretion to give them an extension? I think you talked about that a little bit.
Yes, and we would.
And then, I, I definitely think we have to address opposition to administrative permits. And I would like to hear the tree committee's thoughts about the idea that we would be taking over tree applications that are involved with planning applications. And that was it. Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Actually, I do have, I do have one comment regarding page seven, parking standards, second paragraph before, before zoning ordinance amendments, allowing one of the three parking spaces to be compact. I think that's, that's fine. Reducing the, well, locational requirements for EV charging stations with respect to property lines. I would actually like to see us do something that is, is more encouraging of charging stations. San Anselmo, for instance, has a very good, very streamlined permit for getting an EV charger installed in a, in a private residence. They also have charging station requirements for new developments that I would like to see us adopt. The county has a new green building code. Have you guys seen that? They've just, last month, adopted a really great green building code, I think, that requires specific numbers of EV charging stations for commercial and multifamily new developments and 50% remodels. And I know we didn't talk about that before, but it's kind of come up in the last couple of months, and I'd like to include that in the discussion. It's coming up again in the Measure A reauthorization and the funding that goes to Transit Authority of Marin. And they're looking at new funding sources for EV education, EV rebates, acceleration, and installation of public charging stations to really encourage the use of EVs. I know some of our council have opined that in five to 10 years, we won't be driving cars, but I really don't think that's going to be the case. I think we really need to push EVs and facilitate their acceleration, and I'd like to see that included somehow if it's not too late. Or maybe we'd have to look at that moving forward as we tackle that, that program work.
I think the only thing I wanted to bring up is, in the work program priorities, is I thought staff did a good job of summarizing our past descriptions and discussions on it, but, and I, and I kind of viewed this as more of a catch-all for us in terms of making... in terms of making note of our conversations as we went. And I didn't want to comment on it anymore until we got down to really kind of ordinance level work. And I think, so that's kind of why I'm refraining. I think the one concern I had was Attachment A, and it's the council goals. And what I mean by that is that it's the planning commission's charge to do land use. And there, and I just procedurally kind of wanted to maybe just, maybe bring this issue to our attention. Because the council has four items here that are really planning commission items. The second one demands zoning code to reduce maximum home size. The third one, the tiny homes issue. And then the third one from the bottom, the cannabis. And then the bottom, which is consider establishing density limits. And I think this format actually, even for our own planning commission goals, to them would be good. You know, it's just brief in saying to them, do you have any comments on any of these? To shift it back to us, for us to take the lead. But, and I appreciate on this commercial cannabis issue that staff's really been pushing to try to get a joint workshop between us. Because, right.
We appreciated the pun, the play on words.
Is, you know, how, how, you know, now that we've seen this, I'm kind of wondering, what are we doing to communicate back? Or how, you know, what is our role now? You know, and I don't know whether that conversation's happened before. But for me, it's a little unusual to have the council having all of these workshops and we're not really there, and we're not sending information to them, or, I don't, you know, I don't know. I don't know. What, yeah. So it feels a little odd to me, you know, I don't know. So, like, I'm just wondering, as part of our discussion, should we now be saying, oh, we've seen your goals on item two regarding the zoning code to reduce maximum home size. Can you clarify for us? Are you asking us to initiate an amendment to the single family code or the multifamily code to have it more consistent with, I mean, what are they asking us? Because the way this is, you know, we've now heard the director say, now they're going to start a series of workshops regarding tiny homes with somebody, I can't, some other committee. And to me, I'm like, wait, what?
Yeah.
Wait a minute, they, should they be sending that back to us to ask us to do that? So I just think procedurally, I'm a little confused.
Yeah, well, just to respond to that quickly. It's the Affordable Housing Committee, it's three members, and the mayor and vice, vice mayor. And I think the idea is to just get some very preliminary ideas. This is a group that was formed, I think, in the early 2000s by the then planning director Moore. And provided a lot of feedback on the housing element, developing affordable housing receiver sites. And so I think the idea is to kind of explore options for Fairfax for affordable housing. But it's a great question about at what point does, does, do we hand, do we go from that group back to the planning commission? My guess is it would be pretty quickly, because the planning commission always ends up doing the heavy lifting on this stuff anyway. So.
Maybe a commissioner should be involved in that discussion, if not.
But, I mean, some of the things on, on that goals are like the commercial cannabis. So that's an area that we will get direction at some point. And it will come to us to do our work on it. So, you know, and some of these, it could be from the council's perspective, just exploratory.
So on the cannabis, they've held two meetings. And at their last meeting, I thought that they did an excellent job of clarifying, we want to really focus our effort regarding cannabis on how many commercial, I mean, they were real succinct. You know, at that point, that's, in my opinion, is when it would come back to us. But now what's happening is now they're having a consultant come in, and now they're giving them a presentation. And now, so I liked the idea of a joint workshop. But, but, but it doesn't sound like that's really what's happening, because now we're out in the audience. So how do we get an opportunity, are we hearing, so I don't know. Maybe it'll, it'll all work out. But I just think as part of our communication back on our own work priorities, we have to acknowledge what they've got here and ask any clarifying questions. And maybe that's, you know, enough.
Well, you know, I agree with what Commissioner Gonzalez is saying. Because the more involved we are in the entire discussion of things like tiny houses and reducing size and even the cannabis thing. Sort of, to me, where, where these things pick up with the planning commission is where it gets into the planning and zoning of that system. So there might be some, I'm just imagining cannabis business, for example, since that's an example, might be discussed as to whether we want to have it or not, or whether, you know, how, that type of thing. But then it comes back to us, right, to discuss how that's going to happen. What the, how many feet from school or whatever the regulations are going to be in a nitty gritty, down-to-earth kind of way. But if we're not involved from the beginning in that discussion, or we don't participate in it, it's, it's a little, we can help shape it at that point. And in other words, the town council could get into something that can't be done, sort of zoning and planning wise. You guys can prevent that somewhat, but we, I won't have input in that. So that's, then, then we might be presented with a fait accompli. Here's, here's what we're going to do with the cannabis business, and here's what we need you guys to do with it. And we may not be able to, because we don't know enough.
Right, well, and the knowledge aspect is something where I just said, the planning commission absolutely needs to be metaphorically speaking at the table. We're getting kind of down into the details of this with some very specific questions about what kinds of businesses, where, under what circumstances, and things like that. Frankly, the cannabis is such a challenging topic that I'm just as glad that the ultimate decision makers and policymakers are giving as much thought and input as they can on that topic. I think there's other ones where, you know, the, the planning commission can do a lot of the deliberation. And different communities have different models about how the planning commission's involved. I mean, you know, one of the benefits of the planning commission is that they could do a lot of the heavy lifting in the late night meetings, and they're not having to deal with run the entirety of a town. They're focusing on planning related items. So I guess, you know, just stay tuned is, is, I mean, the cannabis one, I'm still not sure how it's going to relate out. Except that, given that we're looking at that meeting being at the end of May, that we're probably going to have to get a continuation, continuation of the moratorium. It just seems like by the time the council's done with their deliberations and then directs it to the planning commission for their review and recommendations on actual ordinances, yeah, we're going to be past October 31st. So, you know, just, this is going to take a little bit longer than maybe.
Right, well, that's just one example. Okay, so, so let's say you have a meeting about tiny houses, okay? I'll just tell you, I have a client that builds tiny houses in Colorado. I know everything, I know every nail in a tiny house, I'll tell you. So if you, so if you came, if we were included, we can, we can give you our input as well. You know, we may have experience with, you know, cannabis business, tiny houses or other things, that they don't have that experience perhaps. I mean, you know, the more people are in a conversation, the better it's going to be.
Yeah, and especially something that's, that demands community-wide involvement, if it's going to go anywhere. And then the, the interesting aspect is, of course, the, this, and I don't know if we're going to get to this tonight or not, but the state is marching on, what do they say, 300? More than 300 planning-related bills. Apparently, they, they let every legislator sponsor 10 bills. So there's like 5,000 bills that they're bringing up, and 300 of them are directly planning-related. And, you know, these, you know, these aren't just like little nip-tuck things. I mean, you know, when you read about what their scope is. And so it might be that, you know, we end up hiring a consultant just to say, okay, this week, the legislature just passed this, and this is what you have to do now. So I, I'm overstating it, but yeah, the conversations about the tiny homes and, you know, it's great that you have that knowledge. I'll probably be giving you, contacting you about that.
Well, now that I know it's a topic, I'm going to give you all the books I have. Because you can borrow them and you can, you'll see. One of them is this big. There is a book this big about tiny houses.
Isn't they call that dollhouse?
I'll bring that in.
Oh, lordy, it looks like we can move on to the next item.
Okay, I'll keep this brief. This just is the PowerPoint they presented. Yeah, the League of California Cities, what do they call that gentleman who made his presentation? He didn't pull very many punches. I think that from a standpoint of local jurisdictions, most of the news is pretty bad. I mean, there are some carrots out there in terms of funding that they'll, they'll be making available. And there are some things that the league sponsored in terms of good governance bills. But when you look at page three, what's coming this year, 300 bills introduced, housing, land use, homelessness, ADUs, economic development, out of a total of over 5,000 introduced. And nearly every area of housing law is impacted. And again, the direction is to take away local, local governance, local discretion. The, the big bad wolf of it all, SB 827, which would have permitted 10-story buildings in San Anselmo, for example, that's died, so that.
Thank you, thank you. I didn't get sleep last night because of slide number, the top slide on page four. I'm just thinking of the Fairfax market with a 10-story building towering over it.
Yeah, but at the same time, you know, this is ostensibly driven by the housing crisis. I mean, part of this, and this is why I want to learn a lot more about, is, you know, when a lot is worth half a million to a million dollars, you know, what are we really going to do about affordable housing? I mean, you look at the cost of, of building Victory Village, entitlements in hand, and you know, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars per unit. And that's just a reality. So, you know, the legislature can legislate all they want. And some of this stuff is funky, because they're talking about waiving all fees, utility hookups, things like that. Well, there's other state laws that say that you can't charge people for more than the cost of providing a service. So if this legislates that you will shift that cost to current rate payers, but you're not providing that service to rate payers, you basically set up something that's going to have to be adjudicated. And that's not good, that's not good lawmaking. So that's one of the concerns, is that it's willy-nilly, there's a blizzard of them. They, they are inevitably all directed at eliminating or at least reducing local review and local control. One size fits all, so I'm just trying to think the other things.
This is the result of not having too many lawyers on our legislature. Seriously, this is a problem we have now.
Well, and they seem to have the bit between their teeth as far as housing. And, you know, any kind of housing, affordable or not. In fact, I think one of the reasons why 827 died was because cities like Los Angeles said, you are going to crush our affordable housing. Is that, you know, this was just like market rate housing. And there are many communities near transit that, you know, do very well and are for people of limited economic means. And those things were going to get scraped and built with market rate. And it's just like, you know, and people are just asking, you're making, you know, even in Marin, people were saying that it's going to make their affordable housing numbers go backwards, because they were going to take sites that were identified as housing, affordable housing receiver sites, and turn them into market rate. And it's just like, so what are we achieving there? Aside from, you know, housing for one percenters? And that's an overgeneralization, but.
And then there's the 55 years too. Okay, in 55 years, our housing crisis is only going to get worse. And those, those affordable housings requirements expire in 50 or 55 years. They can go back to market rate. So that doesn't make sense either. And a lot of the public have expressed concern about that, that we have affordable housing in 50 years is going back to market rate? When each of those units would be worth, what, $2 million by then?
They typically don't go back. They typically, it depends on who your developer is.
Yeah, but in any event, so looking at this broad brush of legislation and what it tries to do, homelessness is becoming, you know, whether it's transitional housing or as the, the Tree Village representatives were talking about, people who've gone through that transitional program and are now prepared to go into permanent housing. And, you know, this is shifting from the rest program. And, you know, you've been seeing that some of the articles about that throughout the county where, you know, whether it's mobile showers or an attempt to provide more permanent housing. I mean, these are, a lot of this is motivated by these great societal problems facing the state and, you know, really the country, but especially California with the widest gap between the haves and have-nots, the greatest poverty levels and things like that. Yeah, I mean, most of it is just really circumscribing local control, mandating that you process applications in a tremendously short timeframe. And, you know, stay tuned.
Ben, there had been prior requests that we get a briefing on recent legislation and upcoming from our town attorney. What's the status of that, I've heard as well?
My understanding is that they're preparing to do something before the town council. And that I've been trying to shirttail on, well, A, to encourage that to take place, and B, to roll that into a planning commission briefing. I think one of the challenges really is that, you know, if you have 300 planning-related bills, you know, which, which ten do you pick on any particular meeting? And, you know, how substantive a discussion do you have? I sent the, the League of California Cities recap, in summary, of the legislation that already passed. And, you know, a lot of those, again, it's kind of getting to the stage where it's hard to interpret what the real impact is, because one law is running into others. Or they're saying, well, you know, work with, you need to identify market factors that impinge developers. And, you know, it's just like, you know, market factors are outside our control, so.
Well, I, I imagine that part of what's going to be coming up to the top of our priority list is going to depend on the direction that we're given from the council as to what they are going to be wanting us to focus on. So just keep that in mind, because I think the more information we have about, you know, if we're getting into density bonus issues, for example, I really want to continue to, to hear about those issues and, and the other ones.
Yes, and the planning commission will absolutely be in the thick of that, because obviously, anything to do with regulatory changes pertaining to housing, the planning commission reviews that, so.
Any other questions, comments? Oh, let's go to the minutes.
Wait, I changed, I changed my mind, I have one question. So, so there are a lot of really important topics here in this slideshow. If we wanted to get more information on a specific topic, is there anywhere we can go to see, you know, who's the go-to person?
Yes, I could give you the League of California Cities contact people. You could contact them directly. If it's, you know, a quick question, I might be able to answer it myself, but.
Okay.
But, yeah, my main concern is just that there's so much coming so fast.
Yeah.
You know, literally, they're, they're, they're having professional meetings or conferences on a monthly basis now just to say, this is the latest, this is what's dropped out, this is what's morphed, you know, SB 35 ADUs, you know, they're getting rid of, the latest is they're getting rid of floor area ratios. So, you know, that's one more local black line regulation. Nope, sorry, that's off the table now. I mean, that's a proposal, but who knows?
Okay, thank you.
Let's do minutes.
Oh, yes, let's do it. Okay, so this is item seven. And these are the minutes from our last meeting. Does anybody have any corrections, changes, notes?
I looked them over and I couldn't find any, anything that jumped out at me.
See, the minutes are really good.
Oh my gosh, do we have a motion?
I so move.
Second.
All in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
And any opposed? All right, approved. And then we have, what do we have? Commissioner comments? Right, Commissioner comments and requests. Cindy?
I've got two quick ones for, the League of California Cities Planning Commissioners meeting was very good. I'm glad I went.
Great.
Lot of information, if anybody, they post all their presentations. So if you go to the website and then you go up to education and events, you'll see the Planning Commissioners Academy.
I'll go check it out.
And you can look at all of the presentations. They are still, I looked up there this week and there was a new one that they hadn't posted yet. So those were good. My second item was, I noticed we talked about monument signs in 31 Bellinas with that monument sign that came before us. So that is up. Looks good.
You mean the blade sign at Masmasa?
Yes.
Okay, those are actually blade signs, I think. Monument signs are the big ones in the ground.
The big sign at 31 Bellinas has been put up.
It went in, yeah.
And it looks good. They've actually taken down some of the temporary signs, I think. So that's great. And my only question for staff would be about the HVAC stuff on, on the roof and have they completed enclosing?
They're not done yet.
All of that?
Ask the building official to talk to the owner to find out what was installed on that one little piece that hasn't been finished yet.
If I can piggyback on Cindy's comment on the sign on Bellinas, I noticed it also, they look, they look good. But I also noticed that there's a required eight-foot clearance from top of sidewalk to bottom of sign that we discussed when they had come in with their proposal. And I see what they have done is to, they're not, I don't believe the sign, I didn't measure. I don't think it extends all the way out to the beginning of the sidewalk or the edge of the property line. But they do have that problem of underneath the signs, then they've got some sandwich signs on the bottom to keep people from, I think, hitting their heads on the corner of the blade signs as they walk by.
Do they have room to raise the sign?
I don't, I don't know.
Okay.
I didn't measure them.
We'll check it out.
I just wondered because there's that stuff underneath and it looks a little.
It wasn't supposed to project out over the sidewalk. It was supposed to be set back in the landscaping area.
I don't believe it is. I believe it's just before the sidewalk begins. But like I said, I looked at it from across the street. They look good, I just wondered about that. And then the other thing, we were supposed to get an update on Javahut.
Oh, yes. Okay.
Well, let me explain what's going on with that because we, we asked for, there's so many people involved in this now, it's no longer just planning. And so the attorney got involved and we asked her for an update, I think, two days ago. And she indicated that there had, they had agreed on some changes between her and the town administrator and the applicant, and they have yet to report back to planning what that is. So we know that the agreement is supposedly finished, right?
Agreement for use of some restroom.
The agreement for use of the Good Earth bathroom. And what they're, what seems to be delaying completion of everything is what form the closure of the outdoor seating area is going to take to keep, because they're not allowed to have people sitting out there when there's no bathroom. Okay? So that's.
All right. I'm going to say I told you so, they should have installed the bathroom.
Yep, so that's where we are.
So they've got an agreement.
From the get-go, I told you I would come back and bite us in the butt.
That addresses all hours, they're open.
They have an agreement that addresses all hours, yes.
And my final comment, Linda, could I get a complete set of that 10-court staff report, please?
Okay.
With all the analysis and reports and the drawings? I just, I never, I never got it, yeah. And I'm very interested, so I would like to have all of that for my file. If you have it digitally, you could send it all to me digitally. Maybe you did.
Well, I said, you guys had all the reports, right?
Let me check. I didn't, I looked at the hard copies this time. I'll go back and see if I have it digitally and I'll let you know.
I thought I sent the whole pack to you guys.
For which?
For 10 court.
They're grabbing.
Yeah.
We've got that electronic, okay, let me check.
The plans, I can put them.
Okay. I, I would like the plans if they're not there.
They're beautiful.
They're beautiful. I'm going to, I'd like all those studies and everything. It's an excellent project and learning opportunity.
All right. Adjourn.
Johnny come lately. No, I had a question about the chiropractor, you know, I had asked about their progress because they're not.
The guy at 85 Bellinas that was supposed to have all the vitamin B shots in the restaurant.
Yeah, and everything, so it's not, they're not delivering on the vision that they sold us.
No surprises there.
So you can't, you know, you can schedule it for revocation of the use permit.
Doesn't it expire automatically?
No.
No purpose though, we're doing.
All right.
What?
Normous question was, doesn't it expire automatically?
No.
Okay, let's.
How long has it been? I guess maybe that's the first question.
I can check and email you. I honestly don't know off the top of my head.
If you could give us a report at the next meeting, that'd be great.
That would be great. Thank you.
Does, oh.
No, no, not me.
All right, does anybody want to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, everybody.